Good morning. Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Speaker, we have quorum.
I call this meeting of City Council for January 29th, 2025 to order and acknowledge that we are on Treaty I territory, the home and traditional lands of the Anishnaabe, Inunu, and Dakota Peoples, and in the national homeland of the Red River Métis. Our drinking water comes from Sho Lake 40, First Nation, in Treaty III territory. We have a motion to allow a member of council to participate remotely. Counsel Orliko, Madam Clerk, will you read it into the record?
Moved by Counsel Sharma, seconded by Counsel Gilroy, then in accordance with Section 9.19 of the Procedure Bylaw 2050 of 2007, Counsel Orliko be allowed to participate remotely in today's meeting of council.
All in favor?
No.
Contrary, that's carried. We'll now have the opening prayer. Please rise if you're able. We'll hear from Counsel Schreier.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Every year, I sing a prayer from around the world. Today, my turn lands on Budget Day. And in solidarity with City Hall, with all the good members of the administration, the Mayor and council, all the work we do, the hard work we do, the difficult decisions we make, that are expressed today on Budget Day, the prayer I'm going to do is the prayer of the Council of the City of Winnipeg. En nous rassemblant ici aujourd'hui en tant que membre du Conseil municipal, nous prions pour toujours garder à l'esprit des possibilités de rendre service aux concitoyens et aux concitoyennes et à la collectivité. Puissions-nous toujours nous souvenir des valeurs tenaces de la vie et mettre nos efforts dans les domaines et dans les choses sur lesquelles les générations futures peuvent s'appuyer en confiance? Nous reconnaissons que nous nous réunissons sur le territoire du traité numéro un et de la nation d'Écota ainsi que la patrie d'origine de la nation Métis. Veuillez nous aider à conserver la force de rendre le monde meilleur qu'il n'est. Merci, Migwich. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have roll call, Madam Clerk.
Madam Speaker, Counsel Sharma, His Worship Mayor Gillingham, Counselors Allard, Brawadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Eadie, Gilroy, Luke, Mays, Rollins, Santos, Schreier, Wyatt, and Orliko.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the notice for today's special meeting.
Pursuant to Section 79.1 of the City of Winnipeg Charter, a special meeting of council has been called for Wednesday, January 29th, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. in the council building to consider the following. Report of the Winnipeg Police Board dated January 20th, 2025. Item Number One, Winnipeg Police Board Preliminary 2025 Budget Update. Report of the Executive Policy Committee dated January 24th, 2025. Item One, Executive Policy Committee Final Recommendation, Preliminary 2025 Budget Update and the corresponding bylaws. Pursuant to the requirements of the City Winnipeg Charter, no other subject matter or matter other than outlined in this notice shall be considered at the meeting.
Thank you. Let's now welcome our two pages for today's meeting. Dalton Okemal from Southeast Collegiate, who resides in the Waverly West Ward, and Vladislav Tanischuk from St. James Collegiate, who resides in the St. James Ward. Thank you for serving council. We're going to go right into delegations today as it's a special meeting. First up is Chris Lawrence, President and CEO of the Manitoba Heavy Construction Association in support of Item One of the Report of the Executive Policy Committee dated January 24th, 2025 regarding EPC's final recommendation on the preliminary 2025 budget update. Welcome to you.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Mr. Mayor, counselors, civic administration, distributed was a presentation. I won't be reading it. I will be speaking in two component parts, if you will. The first is an overview of the budget and the second suggested or recommended next steps. We begin our observations by commending the mayor, the budget working group, and all members of council for the budget recommendations which are before you today to review and hopefully approve. We support the recommendations, some 134 of them, as outlined in the EPC report, each with fairly explicit details of purpose and objective. The preliminary budget was tabled on December 11, was the product of four to five months of hard work by the budget working group, and it was then the subject of further public scrutiny at at least nine public hearings, not to mention the likely hundreds and hundreds of hours of discussion, negotiating, nuancing, et cetera, ahead of each of those meetings, all of which culminated with EPC reviewing and recommending to council the recommendations and resolutions which are before you today. It merits reminding the public that this was and always is an exhaustive process which transparently provides ample opportunity for members of council and the public to participate in. It attempts with the information that is available to craft, shape, and direct civic investments and finances, and ultimately, it recognizes that inherently, as a budget document, no end of deliberations and examination have ever or will ever result in exact and complete information upon which to granite a budget. That simply is not a real-world reality. But this transparent public process merits congratulation for having gone through a mammoth public exercise in trying to reach conclusions around the budget. Is it perfect? No. Can a budget ever be perfect? No. Will it always be accompanied by facts to the nth degree? No. Will there be ongoing monitoring, adjustments, updates, perfection, revisions of estimates during its currency? Of course. Given all of the effort, the public hearings, the opportunities to inject, adjust, amend, compromise, is this budget document worthy of your support? Most definitely, yes. And so we encourage, in the above context, notwithstanding individual disappointment as there will inevitably and always be in any political budget, your unanimous support of this budget. Let me now shift to next steps. More so perhaps than ever at any time in civic government history, we are approaching a long overdue adjustment to what services we deliver, with what priorities, in what manner of access to revenues, and with what fiscal relationship with senior levels of government. I need not remind you of Trump's tariffs coming to this country on February 1, or the impacts that will have on Canada's trade-dependent economy and ours too, and therefore taxation revenues on all three levels of government, or the impact that it will have on jobs and incomes of Canadians and therefore our collective standard of living. More than ever in our history, each level of government must, as a matter of first priority, focus in these turbulent global times on growing the economy to be able to fund the programs which you evidence in this budget merit public dollar investment for the greater good. You have, as a council, recognized the need, for example, for a chief construction officer to address process, practices, cost mitigation strategies, and procurement options to mitigate costs and add value to capital budgets. You did that because you concluded there was a public good, an evidenced need, to address with that particular decision. We encourage you to invest the same level of dedicated purpose on three critical steps to enable fiscal and social welfare of our country, province, and city to continue. First, and you've heard these before, appoint a chief economic development officer to evidence that the city is invested in and focused on growing the economy, spinning off ROI to Winnipeg and Manitoba economies. Second, press Manitoba to launch a joint blank sheet review and redefinition of program service delivery responsibilities as between the two orders of government with appropriately identified funding revenue streams. And third, concurrently harness existing public support and press the provincial government to engage in new fiscal deal discussions, which should reimagine sources of revenue generation. As part of that, scan jurisdictions in and beyond North America for the use of progressive and robust sources of revenue generation, including those tied to economic activity and/or personal and business income taxes. And so we conclude, Mr. Mayor and counselors, by saying, "Well done." You have a budget that respects public priorities, a budget which seeks to restore financial health, a budget which is the product of robust public review, but to avoid the inevitable fiscal and social health and welfare struggles of ongoing structural operating deficit budgets. Post-budget, please proceed and embrace and act on the three recommendations. Mr. Mayor and counselors, I thank you for this opportunity, and as always, our association and I remain more than willing to assist you in addressing our public policy challenges. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our delegation? Seeing none today, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'll call forward Kate Kahler, Executive Director of the Social Planning Council of Winnipeg, in opposition to the same report before us. Welcome to you.
We had two additions, and we got confirmation from the clerk, so we have Lisa Forbes and Michael Redhead Champagne as well.
I will need to receive that from council. I don't have that. It may have been added later. Thank you. They'll be presenting with you, Kate?
Yes, absolutely. All three of us together.
They can come forward now. Thank you.
All set? All right. Good morning. As we have been, many of us have been here before on both sides of this, for lack of better back of a letter terminal, back of a letter, back, for lack of a better terminology. Sorry. So we brought numbers to you. We've had certain conversations with you, with certain of you privately as well, been to different committees, but just for the sake of repeating a few of the top numbers, 61% of Community Connection services are library services. 45% of information requests were handled at Community Connections, more than any other Millennium Desk, and about 100 people a day receive services at Community Connections. We've been tracking the reach of our social media campaign and know that it's been far and wide and in the thousands. And we'd like to thank the folks here who have acknowledged that privately they've received that, and Counsel Luke as well, for acknowledging that publicly, that the emails were just too many for her to reply to. So in case you are thinking it's just this small group of stubborn so-and-so's, again, pick your term, we want to assure you that it isn't. People care about this space, the services, and the people that need them. Okay. We just want to be clear, we're pro-library. We are not opposed to the work of the DCSP in the downtown, but not in the proposed capacity because their proposal is simply not comparable.
Okay, so the closure of Community Connections has cost Millennium Library four FTE positions. Cuts to library services, especially at the flagship branch, just don't make any sense. The current proposal to replace Community Connections is simply not comparable. We're here to correct the record and say that this proposal is not at all comparable to Community Connections, and remind everyone that this is a cut of 4.2 FTE positions at Millennium Library. You can check out in your document, page 246, it specifically says in the narrative paragraph how it's a removal of these jobs, it offsets some jobs in a new Northern Library, but to the downtown Millennium Library, it's a cut to library services. Research demonstrates that proper staffing is the number one factor that makes libraries safer. So cutting library staff makes libraries less safe for workers and patrons. To have a safe downtown library, cutting 4.2 FTEs doesn't make sense. We need to prioritize staffing. Community Connections' main work is to provide library services for downtown patrons, and the new proposal just doesn't have any provisions for library services. We need library services to be central to the work of the hub because the people Community Connections serves deserve equitable access to all the same things that other library patrons have access to. It helps people get access to resources that improve their quality of life, including help with resumes so they can gain employment. The coldest months of the year, January to March, are the most critical time for downtown library patrons to have a warm place to go, but the proposal, the proposed pilot would only begin in April and only for a few hours a day on weekdays. Cutting in a central city service in the depth of winters should be avoided at all costs. Community Connections needs to be reopened as soon as possible with its full hours. Meeting people's needs where they're at has proven to be the most effective way to deliver services. It does nothing to mitigate the barrier posed by the security checkpoint, and we need Community Connections because its model of partnering librarians with community safety hosts meets people's needs in a low-barrier accessible space. So even if people are carrying all their belongings with them or are intimidated by the barriers, they can still have equitable access to library services. The new proposal does not include funding for community safety hosts, who are an essential part of what makes Community Connections work. Community safety hosts are trained in de-escalation and trauma-informed skills, in addition to standard security guard training. They have saved the city money by reducing the need for emergency services to be called to Millennium Library. While DCSP also takes this approach, the Community Safety Host Program is Indigenous-led and should also be championed by the city. This proposal was made without any consultation with the community working group that has been behind Community Connections since it was thought of after the initial introduction of the security checkpoint in 2019. So we've got, there's some folks here up in the gallery who are part of that group of the Winnipeg Library Board, the library advisory committees, the Indigenous organization that is part of the consultations that happen monthly with library administrative staff. All of this has happened in recent times. Equipped with lived experience, cultural knowledge, and cultural knowledge, this group has donated their time and expertise working alongside library staff to build this successful and innovative space called Community Connections. And their voices, our voices ought to have been heard the first in this decision-making Just to say, we've come together, this community working group has been working for years to do this. Last Wednesday, without anyone knowing, this proposal was allowed to circumvent the process and presented, and so we've been trying to figure out how to be able to address this. So just to say that, we don't want, we'll work with whatever ends up happening, but don't cut the library staff. Think of, you've got groups of people that are your advisory committees, your paid staff, and we're saying to you, keep Community Connections.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you. So I think it's important for us to acknowledge, of course, the work of the Community Voices Committee of the library. I myself have been a participant alongside many of the helpers that have been advocating and raising our voices in favor of Community Connections. We believe it is important for us to be passing a budget that includes full funding for Community Connections so that we can properly provide adequate services to every citizen of Winnipeg, not just the ones that are able to make it through the metal detectors. It's important for us not only to provide those opportunities for people to access those library services, but there are additional opportunities for people to improve their lives, get access to different supports, education, and employment through Community Connections, and the bridge that it creates into the library. It's important for us to acknowledge that when the library offers storytelling programs or reading with little kids, we don't call it an early childcare center and ask the province to fund the library then. It's, I think, also important for us to acknowledge that when the library offers reading classes, we don't say it needs to be funded as an arts organization by the province or the feds either. And the library, in its multifaceted self, provides the services that Winnipegers deserve, and it is irresponsible for us to be passing a budget that reduces services, especially in spaces like Community Connections. I think it's really frustrating for us as folks that have worked for years with data, with evidence, with libraries, and with structures that the city directly themselves set up in good faith to try to establish and support our relatives that need access to these services. And we are in a position right now where we, as the City of Winnipeg, could continue the leadership that we've established over the last 140-plus weeks to be able to provide Community Connections in the future and possibly be a leader amongst municipalities in Canada. I feel like we have an opportunity to do that, and for us not to is, again, I guess that's important for us to put a budget in place that reflects the values that we have as Winnipegers. And so, since we have this model that has worked for years, took us years to get there, we believe that it's important for us to continue that good work and not throw out the solutions that we have identified that are, of course, community-based, Indigenous-led, and reaching out to our relatives in the city that too often don't receive services and support that they need. If we care about the library, we have to reinstate this. If we care about reviving downtown, we have to reinstate this. If we care about safety in downtown Winnipeg, we have to reinstate this. We simply cannot afford not to. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We'll take questions momentarily. If you'd like to be on the bench, we'll hear first from the next delegation. David Grant is joining us online in opposition to the Winnipeg Police Board Preliminary Budget Update, as well as the Executive Policy Committee Final Recommendations on the Budget. David Grant.
Hello, and thank you for inviting me and in advance for listening. Since the election a couple years ago, I have spoken here many, many times, drawing your attention to aspects of your agendas that deserve your attention, and consistently calling for less spending. I'm the one you see most often, but be assured that there are probably hundreds of thousands of us who don't want higher taxes, and those are people that generally vote. Months ago, you said that you would not pay the salaries of those whose main job is to have their hands out for our money. For a moment, the Winnipeg taxpayers had hope. The policy was good, and you followed it. But as soon as you saw a few folks waving signs on your plaza between the buildings, you abandoned that policy and voted to throw our money at the salaries of those people. That was just one mistake of hundreds that I've witnessed. As the Finance Minister explained to me just before I wrote this for a previous meeting, the mayor was aware of city finances long before he was elected, and I believe he's a good person, but council seems to be unable to resist the myriad temptations to spend. And here we are, deeper in depth than two years ago. This council must respect their promise to limit spending. One way is to actually reduce ward spending. Another way is to delay discretionary spending because that's a much bigger number. We see none of that in these budget documents. Even worse, we see a big violation of the pay-as-you-go rule that cities have followed for many years. In the near future, taxpayers will face higher taxes as costs go up and projects are added to the list, and taxpayers will also have to pay rent on our roads and bridges and repay loans, like the one you're going to approve today. I question why TV reporters and the Free Press have been silent on the huge rental payments that the city must make on all its P3 deals in recent years. So, moving on, on the WPB report, while I'm in general agreement with most of the WPB report, there are elements of this that should concern you as members of council. You should be, it should be refined a bit, this report. I ask that you recall that every time you ask your managers to reduce spending recently, they have failed to meet their targets, and you seriously expect that they will meet these targets in 2025? Down to the details in the report, the report warns that with geographical changes and the cautions noted, it would be prudent to increase the mill rate, I suggest, by about $30 million, the amount that's paid for by taxpayers toward the police. If anyone does not see this, ask for the numbers. One is the reduction. There are things in this report that will probably not come to pass based on the warnings in the report. In paragraph B, the report warns that PE, photo enforcement income, will depend on several factors, including legislative. Keep in mind that actual safety improvement reports, meeting the legal requirements, have not yet been published, and that actual data suggests that PE has had a negative impact, net negative impact. In this way, it's not prudent to include any PE income in your budget. Recall also that PE, and this was explained by our previous chief, is only profitable when signage is missing or when DCZs, the zones, violate the approved engineering layout. When PE is done right and signage tells drivers to slow, the millions in profit evaporate. And I would leave it there and invite questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the delegations back. Are there any questions from council? Counsel Wyatt?
Yes, I'd like to ask the delegation, spoke about our libraries. It's frustrating that last year, as you're aware, council actually increases funding dramatically to libraries, but this is a pattern that this council has had, where we have increase of funding coming through from other levels of government, specifically this was the province of Manitoba, which has increased our funding to libraries. And then we see the city in, immediately, in the next year, slowly chomping away at that funding that was given by the province. There's nobody at the province scene to be holding us accountable for the funding that they gave us. We slowly do this shell game of taking the money that we receive, and we start to put it in our back pocket to try to fund our other operating costs or balance the budget coming with a low tax increase. Are you concerned about that? Is that how you see it as well? And have you raised this with the province of Manitoba, which has been supporting us in terms of funding us last year?
Thank you. And all questions and responses will come through the chair. Thank you.
Just because I was at the provincial meeting, you want to answer first, and then I'll answer from, because I was at a provincial meeting.
It's been important for us to take this dog and pony show to every level of government. And so, yes, of course, we talked to you at municipal, province, but even the feds are not safe from us. And so it's been important for us to make sure that we are being broad in the levels of support that we are seeking, and that not only includes different levels of government, but also includes, including partnerships with the private sector, labor groups, and others. And so we recognize the fiscal challenges that the city is in, but we think you should spend the money on Community Connections anyway.
I'll only add to the fact that you mentioned the idea that the province doesn't hold, sorry, council mentions not holding the city to account for the funds. I can tell you from the meetings that I were at with the ministers, they took note of the fact that more money went to the city for this and then it was distributed elsewhere. So they certainly are aware of it, so I can certainly say that.
Thank you. Second question, Counsel Wyatt?
You know what? The city, as you are aware, the city asks the province of Manitoba for funding constantly on different projects. But do you think this speaks to the credibility of the city of Winnipeg? That if they one day go to the province, ask for funding, the province agrees, yes, we're going to increase your funding for the city, the next day, to simply move the money around quietly and fund other things such as bringing in artificial tax increases or cutting services? That it really sends a message to other levels of government, in this case, the province of Manitoba, that the city can't be trusted, that when it comes to monies that are earmarked for a certain area, the city will thankfully take the money in one year and then quietly cut it back in the next? Has that been clearly communicated to the minister, and are they aware of that?
I think it's not appropriate for us to be aware of what the minister thinks, and so, that's a great question, you should ask him.
Thank you. Next question, Counsel Reedy?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I just want to make a comment that I was on last year's budget working group, and I really wanted to keep Community Connections funded. However, it wasn't affordable to do it going into future years, and... years. And so, I'm just wondering if you actually know that what you heard from Counselor Wyatt is untrue in that the facts are that all of the new money given to us through the provincial library funding, all of it went into libraries. We had a huge demand for increased hours across there. We actually had, you know, demands at the Millennium Library to deal with a number of things and worker safety. They were looking at the redesign. We didn't end up funding that because it's not really affordable. And the thing is, if you read last year's budget, the 2024, you would have seen the three-year projection. And in 2025, it was very clear in there that the funding would not be there for Community Connections despite getting the new money from the provincial government. And at that time, that new money came from not the current government. I know that there were some additional increases, I think. I'm not sure about that because I wasn't on the budget working group this year. But I can tell you in no uncertain terms, and there was ongoing funding built in there going into '25 for our community hosts, which you three know that I wholly support, totally support. They do great work and they help keep things going smoothly. They have lived experience and they're working with people who are living in experience. That's a good thing. I suggested-
Thank you, Counsel Reedy. Your question's been asked.
Well, I'm asking if they know. Other part is, I also asked, the referrals and stuff that happen at Community Connections is exactly what 2-1-1, run by the United Way, funded by the province of Manitoba. That's exactly what they do, is they help people find the services that they need. So I'm not sure if you know that, but the fact is, we're not playing around with money. The money for libraries went to libraries.
Thank you. Your response?
So, we are aware that the money went to the libraries. It went, our understanding is mostly in materials because there was a need for materials and that's fine. That's a choice that you make. But the idea that the only money that goes to the libraries should come from the province is something that I find difficult to believe because, of course, the city does have other revenue sources. And even though you clearly signaled that in the budget that there would be no money in 2025, obviously, we hoped we would change your minds based on the evidence of the success of the program. So, that's what we've been providing. And I'd just like to point out that council has made decisions, or EPC is certainly recommending at this point, I'm not sure it's decided on yet, but you are going to change the snow clearing program based on the feedback that you got. So, it is possible that when we bring you evidence, you also change your minds on community grants. So, we really do appreciate that as well. So, we're just hoping that we're bringing you some more information so you can change your minds again.
Thank you. Second question.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I don't know the exact dollar, but you know the majority of library services is funded through the mill rate. Do you know that?
Not sure it matters.
So, I'd just like to say, just to acknowledge, I did not know that. But what I'll say is that, referring again to the document that I mentioned earlier, page 246 of one of your budget documents, in the narrative column, it ends up saying, when you look at where the money came and went, there definitely was money in the budget for libraries. We're not questioning that. I don't know the origins of the money. It works out to about $900,000 in the budget across libraries. What we're doing here is we're recommending that on this amendment that was brought through what was supposed to have been a citizen engagement process about a week ago, there was something proposed there and we're addressing that. So, we would like to, just like Kate said, you've had other things, evidence come up to you. And so, we're saying, we're giving you evidence about this from a broad-based community perspective, that we want Community Connections to be funded.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And through you, thank the delegates for their comments. I just, sorry to do this as an "are you aware" question. I'm asking it because I wouldn't want anyone to be misled by perhaps Counselor Wyatt's comments. Are you aware that any provincial funding for libraries must go to libraries and does go to libraries? It's not allocated elsewhere. It cannot be, and we do not do that. So, any money that comes from the province to libraries goes into our libraries budget. Those funds, provincial funds, the provincial library grant is designed to cover only about 15% of the base salary of any FTE. And in fact, if you look at this year's budget, we are adding 10 FTEs over last year and we're up 28 full-time equivalents since 2023. So, significant investment in our libraries, including adding a new library up in the Northwest this year in the city of Winnipeg. And overall, similar to Counsel Reedy's point, just are you aware that the budget is increasing for libraries this year from $34.5 million to $36.5 million? So, a $2 million increase in a greater investment within libraries in 2025. So, I'm glad to see this investment. Were you aware of that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. We are now aware. One thing that I think is-
Counsel Roland's moves extension of two minutes. All in favor? Contrary, carried?
We also just think that it's important for us as community groups just to be, you know, presenting this information and evidence to you. And we are appreciative and grateful that the city of Winnipeg has engaged in building such a strong connection with community safety hosts, not only in libraries and other places, but we think that that's the city of Winnipeg demonstrating that they know what works well and that we can do more of that. And I acknowledge and appreciate the increase in library funding overall, but I think what we're really focusing on here, we're drilling deep into the downtown. And so, that's why we're talking about Millennium Library specifically. And so, for that site, we do feel like it's still important for us to raise our voices and ask if there's any possibility that the councillors could find it in their hearts and/or budgets to open Community Connections for the coming year, even if there is some type of a cost-sharing agreement. If you need us to come and help support some type of negotiations or bridge conversations, we would be willing to help do that as well.
Thank you. Counsel Gilroy?
Can I just add to that before it goes on? I just want to say very quickly, we know we said it on the record, but just to reinforce it, we are losing 4.2 FTEs at Millennium. So, to build on Michael's comment, we are really drilling down to the needs of the downtown.
Thank you. Counsel Gilroy?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will ask for an extension of time to my council colleagues too, and I'm just going to move this so people can hear me. I'd like my council colleagues to hear some of the discussion that maybe they weren't able to hear at EPC on the difference between, for maybe a lot of the councillors have never been to the Millennium Library, to the Community Connection space. There is a difference between the level of service that a downtown safety partnership would give and the experience and the education by those community connectors and actually librarians that are actually working at the space. Can you drill that down so maybe they would get a little bit more of a comprehensive understanding on why it makes a difference who's in that space?
Thank you. Counsel Schreier moves extension of two minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, carried. The response?
Okay, so what happens at Community Connections is, first of all, it's a library service. You know, what Winnipeg has done in modifying our library service to be relevant in the age of technology the way it has is amazing. It's a relevant facility and they respond, they evolve according to the needs of the community. So, evolving that, the information services that are provided are relevant, specific to the needs of the people who are in the downtown area and have trouble accessing the main library, who may not fit the library conduct rules to go into the main library. So, it is information services. It is a library service first and foremost. And the way that it's delivered is, again, this innovative model of providing information services in an accessible way. This is not a model that people can understand if you've grown up, being able to go to chess club at the library or taking a cookbook reading club or something like that. This is an evolution of the way that it's been provided. So, first of all, it's information services. And it has wraparound services. I worked in the nonprofit sector for 20 years, wraparound services to be able to deliver your service, given the needs of the community you're serving it to. So, what happens is librarians are giving information, primarily helping with access to technology. That's the main thing that they're doing. They're helping people get on a phone, get on a computer and be able to access, to look for rental housing, to be able to get in touch with their workers, to be able to try to get benefits for something. So, they're doing things like that.
Mayor moves extension of two minutes. All in favor? Contrary, carried?
So, they're helping people with that. They're giving them the information that they need. What's also happening is there's library workers there who are crisis workers, again, being able to respond to the needs that are there. And the community safety hosts have been, primarily community safety hosts, it's a whole concept that was dreamed up by the community, by Indigenous-led organization. And they have a priority to hire people who live in the north end and the inner city with lived experience and get extensive, many, many hours, more than a security guard would, to be able to do nonviolent crisis intervention and understand many aspects from a lived experience point of view. So, they're on hand to have a continued relationship with the folks that come in and be able to help them. They also have multiple connections because they're in various connections across the city and other libraries. They're able to communicate and tell them where they can get different services around, according to the neighborhood that they're in. So, it's a wraparound service that goes around the information that librarians give.
Thank you. Second question.
So, now, in terms, I want to break it down because there's really a difference between the downtown safety partnership, the people that are working on the streets right now, and the Community Connection. They have other levels of training.
Question, Counsel Gilroy?
I'm asking about the other levels of training that they have compared to the downtown safety partnerships and even the security guards at the Millennium Library.
Since community safety hosts were envisioned by urban Indigenous young people that were impacted by child and family services, there are a lot of layers that have been built into the rollout of the programming and services. And so, a lot of that has to do with de-escalation.
Counsel Reedy moves extension, two minutes. All in favor? Contrary, carried?
So, most of that has to do with providing de-escalation, building healthy relationships with folks and providing a warm handoff to a community support. And so, whereas 2-1-1 would, of course, do some phone-based navigation and get people via phone to where they need to be, Community Connections and the community safety hosts with the support of libraries and the community crisis workers are able to, in person, sometimes refer people directly with a first-name basis to another first-name basis to a service that they're able to access. And then, once those folks are able to get that service, should any challenges happen, those folks are able then to return to Community Connections for any adjustments, any additional advocacy they may require, any additional services that they need after they receive that first one. And so, really, Community Connections is building a bridge and providing service navigation above and beyond what DCSP and services like 2-1-1 offer, as well as providing that de-escalation, which in some of the research that we've seen, can be between 80% to 95% of the situations of escalated individuals coming in are then de-escalated by us, providing them with, we call them consumables, it's basically coffee in a granola bar, and having that relationship-based approach. And so, I imagine what are the cost savings we've been able to demonstrate to the city of Winnipeg in emergency services, police response and those types of emergency services through these de-escalations, which came from Indigenous young people in the city of Winnipeg that we're talking about, how do we overcome these many different systems? I think it would behoove us as a council to be able to say that we are listening to the voices of those young people and their family and community too.
Thank you, Michael. Counsel Gilroy?
Last question, Madam Speaker, and hopefully somebody allows for another extension for my last question. How does it make you feel that there's so many people that have come and said, in a $1.4 billion budget, that $650,000 is worth it to have staff at the Community Connections open? How is it making you feel when in front of us here today, you haven't been heard with the level of campaigning that you've had?
Thank you, Counsel Gilroy. Question's been asked. Counsel Chambers moves extension, two minutes. All in favor? Contrary, carried?
I think mostly we feel like the city of Winnipeg was in such a great position to demonstrate leadership in library services and in providing supports to people in the downtown area, which are things that urban metropolitan governments are struggling all across Canada and North America. And we have an opportunity and have been demonstrating that we are leaders and capable of coordinating our services and innovating in a time where others are not as fast as us. And so, I just think that it is confusing to me why the city of Winnipeg would throw away something that is so demonstrating leadership in a way that other cities could benefit from as well.
Thank you. Counsel Roland's question?
I think we still have answers. I just want to say, so, how it makes me feel is that we have, it feels like lip service is being made to having community consultation being considered a priority. It makes me, you know, I come to things that the city has and I hear a land acknowledgement at the beginning about Indigenous people, about being on Indigenous territories. And between the combination of thinking about what the city's commitment is to, like the Winnipeg Indigenous Accord, to truth and reconciliation, to citizen engagement broadly. And so, then for us to have, I'm a member of a library advisory committee, so I went through that. I applied, I was appointed, all of that kind of stuff. In that aspect, in my work in the community, I am part of this. I'm Indigenous myself, listening to the Indigenous stakeholders of this whole initiative speaking over weeks, months and years, having this be, being a part of that entire process.
Counsel Schreier moves extension, two minutes. All in favor? Contrary, carried?
And what happens is, I don't know if I can say this strongly enough, I am livid about what happened last Wednesday when these various bodies of community groups and various kinds of submissions that were not allowed to be put in under the name of the advisory bodies, like the Winnipeg Library Board and the Library Advisory Committee. They had to be submitted under an individual's name rather than under that. Us following the process of doing that 24 hours ahead of time, going in, making sure that we were on the agenda, putting in our submissions and having absolutely nobody know during the course of the entire day that we were submitting last Wednesday, library administration, nobody knew that someone had called up DCSP and had them throw in a proposal that day. And now, we're back here submitting for this. You can hear my voice is shaking. I'm angry about it. Every once in a while, I continue to live in this city and I continue to make an effort to, under those tenets, those premises that I mentioned earlier about, you know, my organization's part of the Winnipeg Indigenous Accord, we go to these things, we get asked to participate in this stuff. And again and again, to have it overridden by one person, not a part of the engagement process that seemed to have been agreed upon, that we all agreed was okay. To have that happen is just, it's not acceptable. It's not acceptable that this has been thrown in like that.
Thank you. Counsel Roland's last speaker.
We'll need an extension, Madam Speaker.
Counsel Gilroy moves extension, two minutes. All in favor? Contrary, carried?
First, Madam Speaker, I want to acknowledge the difficult sentiment- First, Madam Speaker, I want to acknowledge the difficult sentiment that was shared. As the former Chair of Protection Community Services in Parks through the 2019 period, I definitely am familiar with the liaison, the library board work, the indigenous organizations that came together, the library advisory committees and more that built this pilot and believed in it and really took the time to create and craft it. So it is with some irony, and this is the question, that I find myself, you know, solo with councillor Gilroy, perhaps, in doing a motion to amend this budget for the community connection space, the integrity, to prop up those voices. But in the budget, there's a couple of things. I'm going to be challenged by my colleagues here to find a funding source, and I will look to perhaps the accommodations tax or the money.
Councillor Rowland's a question for the delegation?
It's pertaining to the funding source, Madam Speaker, with respect to a future budget motion, and I'm going to ask their opinion on, on which one, Madam Speaker, so, because we'll have to find a funding source. So with respect to the accommodations tax on the one hand, that money, taking it from economic development in Winnipeg, why? Because we also have another feature, a $250,000 feature, that wouldn't be enough for the community connection space for Graham Mall, something that downtowners and center plan told us. As a local councillor, where's the Millennium Library, right? So, simple question, what would the funding sources be that you'd identify and why?
Thank you. The response? If any? Okay. Councillor Gilroy moves last extension, she's saying, two minutes for the response. All in favor? Contrary, carried.
You're just asking our opinion on where we think the money could come from. No, I'm asking your opinion. I'll be asked that when councillor Gilroy and I crafted a motion to, you know, save it in budget. I'll be asked, you know, where does the money come from? And of course, as a downtown councillor, I know the impacts will be felt. So accommodation tax looks like a thing to me because we know it affects the economic development from Tim Hortons to Kemble and Nemhard at Women's Health Clinic. They're already feeling the
The response, please.
The impact of the closure from December to April. We'll need some, some prorated money here.
We think that there are opportunities within the current city of Winnipeg budget to move some stuff around, whether it's around the economic development side of things or it's relating to community services, or, hear me out, policing, possibly. Just saying, that's the biggest piece of the pie. Maybe we could take $640,000 from that one and put it into the library because it would help make our downtown safer.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I saw in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago, Winnipeg Police Service posted $2 million surplus on, on this year. And so this is, this counts to prevent the repacing. We talked before, there's been, it's well documented, you can talk to, to library administration about diversions from emergency services, from having community safety hosts be able to intervene. So it could be thought of in terms of that.
And just quickly, I would just ask that you actually look at those funding sources when you do look at it. We do think there's room in the budget to, to find it. But what I would like to say is like, let's, let's not pull, I mean, the point was made earlier, the record investments in libraries, but it was at the cost of the downtown library. So let's make sure, like, I'm unaware of 211. Can I keep going?
10 seconds.
Okay, I'm unaware that 211 is saying, we just sit around all day and don't answer any phone calls because community connections is there. More is needed in those services, not less. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Have a good day. I'll now move into the first report, the Winnipeg Police Board, dated January 20th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you read the subject line?
Item one, Winnipeg Police Board Preliminary 2025 Budget Update.
Thank you. Councillor Chambers to...
Tomorrow on the helicopter is separate and distinct from this vote. Can I get some clarity on that, please?
That's my understanding. Mr. Clerk, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Councillor Chambers to introduce the report that will be for information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move adoption of the Winnipeg Police Board Preliminary 2025 Budget Update as information.
Thank you. Any speakers? Councillor Chambers to close.
I would encourage all members of council to support this, this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. To receive that report as information, all in favor? Contrary? That's carried. Two will be noted in opposition. Thank you. Next is the report of the Executive Policy Committee dated January 24th, 2025.
Item number one, Executive Policy Committee Final Recommendation Preliminary 2025 Budget Update.
Thank you. We will hear from the mayor to open the item. We do have an amending motion. Motion one, moved by councillor Wyatt and seconded by councillor Orliko. That will be second. Mr. Mayor, your opportunity to introduce the item.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And as discussed, I will be sharing my time with councillor Jeff Purwadi as our finance chair here. So it's, I rise to introduce and to support the, the, this report with the final recommendations for the 2025 balanced operating capital budgets. I will not be supporting the amending motion. This budget that is before us is really, it's hard, a reflection of the priorities of Winnipeggers. Winnipeggers have spoken loud and clear, especially in the last several months of last, of last year, the final months of 2024, where a few polls were done and surveys were done, and Winnipeggers consistently said that their priority for the city of Winnipeg is an increase in public safety and an increase in investment in, in roads as well. So as we begin today to discuss and debate this budget, I want to, first of all, recognize that this budget at its heart is a reflection of the priorities articulated by Winnipeggers. I also want to thank the Budget Working Group, councillor Jeff Purwadi as finance chair, councillor Evan Duncan, councillor Matt Allard, and all those who worked on the budget. I also want to thank our chief financial officer, Tracy Graham, Lisa Pablo, and the entire corporate finance team for all of their work as well. We have such a dedicated staff. Winnipeg, as we know, is growing. We've grown by 71,000 people in the last three years alone, according to Stats Canada. But our investment in several of our services has not kept pace and most certainly are the need for greater public safety resources. And an increase to public safety is what we've heard loud and clear from Winnipeggers. And in fact, as you take a look at the police services officer to population or resident ratio since 2014, that has fallen by 17.5%. And there's been no, really no additional firefighters of note added in recent years. And so this budget begins to address those challenges. It funds 36 new police officers and additional patrol cars over two years, 15 additional community safety officers to enhance transit security, 24 new firefighters for the Winnipeg Fire Paramedic Service. I want to thank the provincial government for their partnership in, in supporting those firefighters. And I want to take a moment to thank the federal and provincial governments for their investments that are reflected within our, both our operating capital budget. They are partners with us and I thank them for that. I'm very excited about this budget, the fact that this budget allocates $1 million for community-based crime prevention, really through youth recreation programming in high needs areas. This is a very important investment. We're investing in young people, we're investing in youth recreation, we're partnering in high needs areas with those organizations who are doing great work right now to provide services to our young people. It's yet another reason I will be voting in favor of and supporting this budget. Winnipeggers keep talking to us about the need to fix the roads, to clear the snow, and this budget invests in those priorities. In fact, for the first time ever, this budget has a, 2025 budget includes the, the 25 budget and the, and the capital out years, the five-year projection. And we see an unprecedented $1 billion investment in regional and local street renewal over the next six years. In fact, for this year alone, 2025, the budget invests $169.3 million for road repair, active transportation, road safety projects, which is up significantly over 2024. And this budget also reflects an unprecedented investment in transit. The mill rate support for transit has, is up to $124 million as we prepare to launch the citywide, new citywide transit network this summer. When you compare this $124 million mill rate support investment in transit this year to 2014, you see at that time, it's almost an eight, it's almost an $80 million increase from, since 2014. The number in 2014 was around $45 million, we're up at $124 million. And so we continue to prioritize our mill rate support for transit, and that mill rate support helps to provide, among other things, discounted products to keep transit fares affordable for those who need it the most. I'll say finally as well, that we also are looking at the ways in which we can control costs this year. And so we know that our chief financial officer will be undertaking several initiatives to control costs and, and also to, to make sure that we are reaching our targets in expenditure management as well. So there's a lot of work that will be done by our CFO and her team over the coming year as well. So I will have more to say in my close, but for now, I'll turn it to my colleague, finance chair Jeff Purwadi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Purwadi?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This is the first update to the multi-year budget. I'd like to thank the, the Budget Working Group in particular, my colleague councillor Matt Allard, and my councillor colleague Evan Duncan, for the many hours we spent looking at what's changed even in just the nine months or so since the, the multi-year budget was passed by council last, last March. I'd like to thank our staff. This is the first budget that our new CFO, Tracy Graham, was involved with, as well as Lisa Pablo and her team, for the countless hours that they spent after we met as a group, going in and working with the controllers way down in all the departments for all of their work. So again, beyond the process, it's not a state secret that the financial realities of all bodies are challenging right now. Just like you are at home, the realities of inflation are real on the city of Winnipeg. The cost of everything is going up, whether it's goods that we're purchasing, our, our salaries are going up, everything has, has been increasing in price. But that said, we are, we are focused on the things that matter to Winnipeggers. On our downtown, our safe spaces, 24/7 safe spaces investments, we're realigning them this year to better match the new provincial government program that's going to provide wraparound supports and get people into permanent housing and get rid of encampment scenarios where they're no longer, what's, what's the encampments gone? The encampments are gone for good. A strong economy. We're investing to make sure that our permit process gets those dollars in the ground and allows businesses to flourish here in our city more quickly. A livable, safe, healthy, happy city. We're continuing to invest in playgrounds and parks and community service amenities. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we have more people working in our, in our libraries than ever before. And every time that we, even though there was some additional provincial money, it did require investments by the city of Winnipeg to do that. And the numbers unfortunately tell the story. Visits and material usage increasing dramatically through the branch network that we spent a lot of time and money investing in over the last 15 years. Millennium Library Branch, people are scared of our downtown. We've got a downtown problem. We're not running away or, you know, proposing to move our downtown library, but we do need to reevaluate what our downtown library looks like. We need to, I think, focus on making sure that it is in fact a library. I hear people talking about, you know, the needs of, of the downtown community. Those needs aren't going, those, those services aren't going anywhere. You can just go feet away into the library branch and get, get access to those services. The barriers to getting, the barrier, the, the requirements to get into the library are pretty, pretty minimal. I mean, leave your weapons at home is basically all you need to do. Improved customer service. 311, a couple of years ago, over 11 minutes was the average wait time to get a, to get a call. We are a minute 41 now. How incredible is that? You know, we're, we're responding to cust, to, to residents. These are the sort of things that people complain about and, and we're responding. And again, controlling costs. We're going to have to really continue to work to find savings in this world where everything costs more. Fire trucks cost more, fleet vehicles cost more, blades for graders, lawnmowers, as, as well as the, the labor of our employees. So we're going to work with our CFO, with, you know, people throughout the city organization to try and find ways in an area, in a, in a very uncertain time. What is the impact of tariffs in the United States potentially going to do to the goods that the city of Winnipeg needs to buy? These are questions that, you know, we're obviously discussing, that we're, you know, preparing for. But it's, there's definitely a level of uncertainty right, out there right now. So even though this is our budget today, we, we have some uncertain times ahead. By increasing the property tax more than perhaps the 3.5% that was originally contemplated, we've, in some places, addressed some of the risks that are, that were in the, the budget that we inherently knew were there. We've increased, you know, snow clearing budgets more, but perhaps even still not to what we know they need to be. Things like the savings that we had accounted for in the fire and paramedic service that we knew weren't realistic based on current patterns and the reality of workers' compensation and overtime. We've addressed that to a degree. So again, it's, it's still turbulent in difficult times, but we are making many capital investments. We're preparing for growth. I mean, the most multi-generational investments in our sewage treatments, the history of our city, billions of dollars for the upgrade of the, the North End Sewage Treatment Plant. That project proceeds and we need it. Otherwise, the city of Winnipeg will be stagnant and can, can't continue to grow. So again, I encourage everybody to vote for today's budget and I thank you for all your time.
There isn't a line item for the North End Sewage Treatment Plan in the capital budget. I mean, it's an important issue, hundreds of millions of dollars, but it's not actually, to vote against this budget would not be to vote against the North End Sewage Treatment Plan in that it isn't invited.
Thank you, councillor Mays. Maybe that'll be addressed with speaker coming up. Next is councillor Orliko.
Can you hear me?
Oh, pardon me. Just before that, councillor Orliko is the amending motion, that's right, that has been circulated. Councillor Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak to the amending motion and probably concurrently to the budget. We have since 1998 started a process of property tax freezes or low taxes that have been offset with costs going to infrastructure, specifically the local streets renewal reserve and the regional street renewal reserve and the rapid transit funding system. But for all intents and purposes, since 1998, the last year of Susan Thompson's six-year term as mayor, at the time, there was great pressure to bring the city in at 0%. And she successfully did that in 98. 98, following, following 1998, we went on 14 years of property tax freezes. Following those 14 years, we've continued that process, one could argue, because we have not only, we have frozen the amount of income coming into our operations. We have funded the local street renewal reserve by 1%. We have funded the regional street renewal reserve by 1%. We then did a quarter percent increase to fund the, the rapid transit system. But the amount of money going to the bottom line, i.e. the operations of the city, has been basically zero. There have been a couple blips during the way, under myself as finance chair, under councillor, the last year of councillor Fielding, I think it was 3.74%, he raised taxes. But for all intents and purposes, it's been zero. Mayor Bowman gets elected, again, zero. I want to commend EPC for having the courage to bring in the property tax increase that they're proposing this year. However, the motion that's before us today speaks to not just today, but to the future. We need to look past what we've been on. We seem to be like a truck stuck in a rut, whether it be mud or snow. And the more we try to get out of the rut, the more we seem to go deeper and deeper into the rut. Some of us know what it's like to push a truck or a vehicle out of the snow. You back up, you go forward, and you keep getting further and further stuck, deeper and deeper. That seems to be the city of Winnipeg today and the state of our finances as a city and our direction. And I'm specifically going to give you some examples of what we're facing now as a city. You all know the challenges. Our fiscal stabilization fund is underfunded. Our existing infrastructure is crumbling at an alarming rate that we have not been able to get a handle on, even though we've dedicated more money, as the mayor has pointed out, than ever before. But we refuse to come up with a plan to deal with the existing infrastructure deficit, which is out of control. Our existing, and that's both local and regional streets, our existing bridges are underfunded. Our underground services, Madam Speaker, are underfunded. We continually dump raw sewage right into the river system, and we don't seem to have any plan to end it. We have a North End Treatment Plant. Frankly, the funding and the operation, the construction are out of control for all intents and purposes. Doesn't seem to be any attention on that. We have soft infrastructure. A lot of people call it soft infrastructure. Our parks, our recreation, all underfunded. recreation, all underfunded, our pools, both indoor and out, our existing inventory of our existing buildings, our cost to maintain them continually goes up, why? Because they are older buildings that now cost more to maintain, why? Because we have not replaced them. I'm also gonna refer to the new strategic infrastructure, Madam Speaker, that we need to start to invest in, that we are not investing in as a city, Chief Pegwais' extension, Keniston Wye, all the things that are coming, Bishop Grandin, at any point in this city, you can drive anywhere and see the congestion that is growing, and the demands of a city that needs new strategic investment, rapid transit, we're not even talking about that anymore. And yet, other cities across this country are facing their challenges, Madam Speaker, and they're rising to them. They are investing not only in fixing their existing infrastructure, they're investing in new strategic infrastructure such, such as bridges, freeways, and rapid transit, they're investing in building new regional parks, something that this city needs to look at as well, they're investing in building new regional indoor recreational facilities, they're investing in the infrastructure that makes up the municipal fabric of any successful city. The municipal fabric of this city is now in tatters after twenty-six years of self-imposed austerity that we've imposed on ourselves, affecting our ability to invest, probably in the most important area that we have ignored, which is planning. Planning out the future growth of this city, planning out not just the growth of the city and how we're gonna build, but also planning in terms of financially planning for the future, with a direction of where we want to go as a council. Now, we attempted to do that, I thought, Madam Speaker, back after the last election with the, the Council's Strategic Priorities Action Plans. In fact, this was supposed to be the document that was supposed to guide us going forward with the ideas coming out of this, but it appears to me that this has been nothing but a public relations exercise, because the funding of these major improvements that was called for in this document by members of council, Madam Speaker, continue to go unfunded or underfunded or not funded at all. And that document could have been the driving force be, behind us getting out of this rut that I refer to and breaking the last twenty-six years of these tax freezes. Now, council is doing that this year, but it seems to be motivated largely political, that we raise the taxes this year and then we're back to the same level of taxation next year for the sake of that general election. I think the public will see through that, Madam Speaker. Wouldn't it be better for us to be able to go up front to the public and say, these are the challenges we're facing, these are the issues we're facing, not to mention the human crisis that's now occurring in the streets of the city? Wouldn't it be better for us to lay out those challenges, Madam Speaker, and say, this is what we need to fund the existing infrastructure that's crumbling at an alarming rate, the new strategic infrastructure we need as a city, as well as the ability to able, to facilitate the growth that we hope we can facilitate in the future? And outline those challenges to the public, and to say, this is what the funding levels we need, uh, need to be at, and this is what the tax increases will probably have to look like. Other cities have done this, Madam Speaker, and they have done it through their strategic planning. Therefore, the motion before you today that has been moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Orliko, speaks exactly to that, the need for us to plan for the future, to have the wisdom to be able to know that we are facing challenges that have to be addressed. But wisdom's not enough, we also need to have the courage to be able to address those challenges, and to do it in form of moderation so that we don't go over the top, so that we're not facing one day in the future, a double-digit property tax increase as we continue to kick the ball down the street to future councils to have to address the challenges we're facing. And that's a real concern, Madam Speaker. As long as we continue to ignore the challenges we're facing, we will set up future councils for failure or challenges that will be so great, they're gonna wonder what we are, what were we doing, and why couldn't we show the leadership that we needed to show? The wisdom, the courage to act upon that wisdom, and the moderation so that we don't go over top, I'm quoting, of course, Plato from two thousand five hundred years ago, if you want to be a virtuous, what he called the virtuous man, or the, or today we call a virtuous person, you need wisdom, which is different than knowledge, plus courage to act upon that wisdom, plus moderation, don't go over the top, implement, go forward, equals, that formula equals the virtuous person, it can equal also the virtuous city. We need that today as much as they needed it back when he wrote that two thousand five hundred years ago. This city is not on a path that is balanced, the budget may be fiscally balanced, but our operations are running deficits all over the place. And the deficits in terms of what we're not addressing as a city, Madam Speaker, scares the heck out of me going forward. And Winnipegers are seeing it as well, and let's be frank and honest, we now have municipalities around this city where citizens of Winnipeg can move to, and they are moving, and there is a trickle taking place right now, Madam Speaker, that I've spoken about before in this chamber, they are moving to the West St. Paul's and the East St. Paul's and the Headingleys, which now all of a sudden are able to offer a full range of municipal services. And be aware, Madam Speaker, that that trickle can turn into a flood. And then, we're faced with a Detroit-like scenario that Counselor Edie has talked about in the past, that none of us wants to face, because then-
Counselor Schreiber, new extension of two minutes.
-it will be too difficult for us to turn it around, or that council of the day to turn around. Let's have the foresight, let's have the vision, let's have the courage to start to plan for the future and set aside the funds that we know we're going to need to address these challenges. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Next Speaker, Counselor Orliko.
Sure, Madam Chair, I think it, Counselor Gilroy.
Oh, we do have, uh, that's right, that motion has been circulated, Counselor Gilroy and Counselor Rollins has seconded the motion, motion two.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think, uh, Madam Speaker, just for clarity, I think I have to speak to the motion and the budget as a whole at this time, I can't just talk about my, okay. So, um, uh, so my motion here is trying to please ask my council colleagues here to, to bring back the Community Connection space, and I really want to say this is not the same as the Downtown Safety Partnership, and, and I wish I could have brought you to the space so you could have seen and you could really understand the different levels of training that, um, the Community Connectors go through, and the staffing that is required to manage the library. You know what, I, these are my community members that go there mainly, I mean, it is a citywide facility, but Counselor Rollins and I are the counselors, and we heard over and over again when that library was closed due to safety concerns, due to, you know, to all the issues that we were seeing, when we finally put that in, the Community Connectors in that space, things shifted and changed, so much so that now other cities are looking to Winnipeg and adopting this model, and I just can't understand in my brain why we would stop something that is working when this whole budget is to talk about safety within our downtown. And I want to make it clear that I've been very, very clear that we need to make sure our downtown is safe regardless if you're north of Portage or if you're south of Portage, and that people belong in both spaces, and that this isn't a push out to the north of Portage, 'cause this is a library that everybody should be able to be welcomed in, this is a public space, public amenity that has worked, and, and it's really frustrating in a one-point-four-billion-dollar budget, we can't find six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. I have supported libraries opening in other areas because I think it's a, a public good, I think it's one of our core services that we need to be providing, but at the same time, we are seeing the staff is leaving and going to these other libraries, and now people say, no, no, that's not how it works, and we can all debate that, but that's what it feels like for our community. You had over and over and over again, people coming in delegations, people writing about the concerns over this, the biggest thing in this budget has been this, and for six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and we haven't added it into the budget. And I, that, like, I just, it, it, I, it, I, I can't understand it. This budget is, is really about transparency, and, and it goes back to the very basic thing of the Strong Mayor Model, and I've been on both sides, so I understand it. But what's happening here is that with the lack of transparency, we're not getting the information that we need. So now, when I go to community services, where I used to be able to ask about the police budget, I used to be able to ask about, um, General Counsel of Community Centers, we don't do that anymore, it's all at EPC. So, the, the people, the, the, the people that aren't on EPC have a lack of information. We want to talk about the budget process, oh my God, we were all in an uproar when we had EPC plus two, remember that? There's less than, for, nobody has enough information, at least we had, at least we had eight people with information, now we're down to three on a budget working group from straight to back, that have, don't have all the information. Then when we ask for a council seminar on, on police stuff, I get nothing. And we're supposed to have a budget on this, on police issues, on police funding. We don't have a CAO yet, which is a major issue, and I, and I love Sherwood to death, he's been nothing but good to me, but I have an issue with a clerk that is supposed to be neutral as the head of our CAO in a very political job connected with the mayor. That's not healthy governance, and that's not a model we should be wanting for our city. When we have counselors that are having to thipper to get information, we have a governance issue here at City Hall. When we have community members that have come in an uproar for six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and we can't find the funding, and many of you probably have never even been in the space, and probably have never understood really the dynamics of what's going on there, and you have two counselors saying you need it. Like, it's, it's, it's very, very frustrating. Like, we're having a lack, the lack of information that's going on here is a concern, keeping us uneducated so we can't ask the right questions is a concern, and so that's how I'm feeling with this budget. We talked about, um, the, the mayor talked about putting money into, um, putting money into the youth program, that's all going downtown, downtown, why? But I can tell you right now, my community centers are closed, you know why they're closed? Because we're not funding them. They barely have enough money to hire caretakers, um, if you, if you got a nice fancy one and you got a proper gym, you can rent it out, but now, our community centers are, are, are fighting between having open gym space for our you, youth, which we know youth crime is up, which is a big prevention thing, so we know we should be getting our youth involved in activities, youth crime is up, but community centers are fighting for the access because they, they have to rent out the space to keep the doors open to, you know, people that are playing basketball. So, I, it is priorities to me, this budget is priorities to me, and I'm not seeing the vision here. And, and I'm really, I really think that we have a problem if we're thinking that this is getting any better, and I know Counselor Luke's has been on this, and, and yeah, I was on the other side of it, I'm part of the problem, um, but the Strong Mayor Model is not serving the needs of my community, it's not. And you, you can just tell that when you have so many people that voice their concerns, and we're not even looking about increasing the budget for six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in a one-point-two-billion-dollar budget, and I hear, hear people saying, oh, the Downtown Safety Partnership, well, if the Downtown Safety Partnerships want, want more jobs, I can tell you, please send them to me, I can give them more jobs. I've got lots in the West End that needs help. I don't want to be pushing people out, and I don't want an equity lens based on where they live or where they work in our downtown, and that's critical for me. And when you're, when you're, when you're saying the Downtown Safety Partnership should be doing that, I gotta question that. I gotta question that. This is a community group that does really great things, they're making the community feel welcomed in that space, which everyone should feel welcome, and it is a library service, and, and if, you just would have gone down and seen, you would have seen it for yourself, new immigrants, young families, you know, people that have come to Canada that, that don't speak English very well, they were helping them all in this space, and yes, they're helping, they're also helping some of our most vulnerable members that at times needed a little extra support, and you know what, that was a safe space to provide it instead of in the middle of a library where you have kids studying and kids take, learning how to read, that was the right space. When you ask for information and you're not getting it, it's a problem. When we're saying that we're providing youth programmings, but we're only providing the, the funding for, for the why, that's a problem. Let's fund youth programming, let's do that, we need to do that, at our rec centers. You know, you know what, we, we need to get back to the basics, remember when you used to grow up and you used to go to the gym at your local school, there was rec programs running out of that from the city of Winnipeg, 'cause I was a product of that, and maybe I'm here 'cause I was a product of that. So we, so I don't understand that why we are changing the things that are working. Community Connection Space has been, like, boom, it's been this wonderful thing, all of a sudden the funding's gone, but, oh yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna change it when we know it's working, when we know the model works. So, yeah, I know, I'm getting to the end, so I guess I'm feeling disheartened, Madam Speaker.
Counselor Edie, new extension, two minutes, all in favor? Contrary, carried?
I'm feeling, I'm feeling like the money has left my community, and I'm feeling like my members of my community are not being heard, and I'm feeling like the aging of our community is not being dealt with, Madam Speaker. So, I call and I ask all my council colleagues to really listen to what I'm saying here about the Community Connection space, it's a very little money in this big budget, and when you have two counselors that, that know this really well, please listen to them, and you have an overwhelming group of people coming forward that are saying this is the right thing to do, then maybe your thoughts are not right. Please listen to them, take a step back.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Counselor Gilroy, Counselor Orliko, and then Counselor Rollins.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you very much. Um, hard to follow Counselor Gilroy with that passion, uh, speech she did, um, and she's very accurate. Um, I was also part of the time when the Horblins didn't happen, as Chair of the Community Services Committee there, and, uh, and I, and I felt the blowback and the difficulty at that time even, it took an amazing amount of work just to keep it going then, so, um, was, I was unhappy but not surprised when, uh, it got, it got toasted. But again, I think Counselor Gilroy's spoken to that quite well, and I appreciate that. So, what I, what I've done, and, and I've done, you know, I've both been on EPC and off EPC, um, the days of Sam Cates, I was off EPC, thank goodness, um, and, uh, worked on the outside trying to make change, and, uh, we also did audits, and we got some movement there, um, and then, uh, with Counselor, with Mayor Bowman, I actually had quite a enjoyable time, uh, working with him, because I thought he was quite good at listening, uh, and acting, not just the listening part. So again, but here we are today, a new day, new dollar, new time. Counselor Gillingham was barely elected, um, and I tried to support him- Councillor Gillingham was barely elected, um, and I tried to support him. Uh, it got very difficult because I understood, uh, his philosophy of, uh, you know, he has a mandate that he provided that showed public, even though the three point five has been changed, and I, and I actually thanked him for that, um, because I knew how difficult that was for him to do, uh, in, in this budget. But what this budget really has, uh, shown me, um, as I try to work through it as an independent councillor, uh, trying to work with Tracy Graham, my new CFO, fantastic, thank you so much for the help she tried to give me when she can, you know, give me what she can, um, but, uh, a lone soldier, uh, working with some colleagues, it's a little harder for independents to try to figure out, uh, because we don't have the information. But what information do I have? Well, this, this budget really represents, and councillor Wyatt pointed it out, that the city of Winnipeg has just run out of room to manage its budget. And you can see that's represented by the lack of the funds for the SSR, uh, even though we have increasing risk. Um, the increasing corporate efficiencies that we never meet each year, um, so they're just brought forward year in, year out. The increased risk list that I've seen throughout, the amount of debt being used for projects and the limited debt that we have available to us now. Uh, the increased first calls on our twenty twenty six budget, those are usually unheard of, uh, there's quite a few of them in this budget. Uh, you can see the growing operating cost versus our revenue. This is represented in that there is a page in the budget called the zipper, um, that we could see, where we tried really hard during the Bowman years to try to bring the zipper closer together, and now it's quickly expanding all over again. Um, the lack of a new deal, I've always told, wait, do we have a new deal with the province? Well, that, that did not materialize, it had materialized with Mr. Bowman, it even materialized under Mayor Murray back in the day. But again, that is not coming to fruition. The increasing, uh, amount of provincial regulatory fees, uh, that are being paid by residents, uh, for development, um, not by developers, but by residents. Uh, that's again, it's, it's a philosophical, uh, decision, um, to do that kind of, I call it corporate welfare, I'm sorry if that word offends people, but again, if it's a service to, for a business, the business should pay for it, uh, we should do that fairly. Uh, taking a massive dividend from the water and waste, oh, we all know the upcoming water and waste report, uh, on its rate is going to be dramatic, especially for those who are poor. Um, it's going to be very dramatic, it's a flat tax, I call it. Um, again, we don't have here today, which I think is quite surprising, it should be part of this, so we're very honest and open and transparent about it, but again, we took a massive dividend, again. Um, the growing infrastructure deficit, um, it is not getting better, uh, Takona Park, it's sad, um, it is still sinking into the, into the river there, and, uh, the investments aren't there, that's around all our parks, including our local parks. Uh, they'd be relying on LDR, um, you can talk to a park, said I'd like to put a slide in, they go, oh, no money. Like to put a flower bed in, no money. Um, you have to use your LDR. And even then, if you want to use your LDR, they say no, because there's mob rating costs. And we just did the rounds of full, uh, weighted full closures, about forty five thousand dollars each, great, we want to take away the recreational service and call, you know, sod grass as the, the equivalent, while for me in the River Heights Fort Gary Ward, not, not equivalent. We need to give a place to meet, and we need to provide a menu, so, now we're, um, pressing around two hundred thousand dollars for very minor improvements to those parks so we can have kids play and have a place to meet. Um, so those are just some of them, a, and also we know it, there is some addressing, and again, nothing's a hundred percent here, there is some addressing the increasing, uh, human suffering. And again, I thank councillor Gilroy, because again, I can't see everything. The one million dollars going to the Y, when I used to run a program, uh, back in the inner city, many of the students I worked with refused to go to Y, they just felt unwelcome. Um, they just couldn't go there, took an amazing amount of effort, uh, to get them there, and most of them didn't last, because they just didn't feel welcome. Again, I echo councillor Gilroy, that money should be spent on local neighborhood programming, because remember, a lot of people don't have cars and are to access. So again, those are some of the high level ones, that I just see this budget as just running out of roof. Um, for the River Heights, and then, as I mentioned when I did it, I went to the delegation stage, I talked to councillor Bowaty, and I said, you know, I just don't see a lot here except you're asking River Heights Fort Gary residents to pay more to get less. Um, prove me wrong, um, because I can't see how I could sell that budget to them, when, when I see is, uh, not a lot coming to the River Heights Fort Gary Ward, um, but there are, there are, but we have to pay a significant amount in property tax increase, especially due to our increased acceptance value based in the neighborhood, which is great, but again, though we're going to be paying more than the mean average by far, uh, in, in the River Heights Fort Gary Ward, and I just said, okay, how am I going to explain this to the public, uh, to my residents? Yes, the policing is good, a couple of years away, not, not bad, we have, we reduce some of the risk, not a whole lot. Hard to say workers' compensation board, uh, is a great thing, um, but that's a huge portion of the increase, uh, that was paid out. So, so again, I understand the budgets aren't simple, um, there's no one answer, uh, but I have to look at the way I am now, uh, exclusively, I'm a city councillor, but I also represent, focused on representing the River Heights Fort Gary Ward at the collective hall. So, when I look at this, I met with councillor Bowaty, uh, talked, discussed it with them, I'd been over the budget, I'd actually rewritten it, the whole amending motions, the whole motion a couple of times, just to make sure I understood what's going on, went through the book, and again, uh, the department head should be very good and trying to help me out, uh, trying to figure if he's got, I don't have the information they have. Um, but again, when I went to delegation, I think councillor Mays was there, talking about some changes in wording, but I presented, uh, some, some options on, on what I think the River Heights Fort Gary Ward needs, plus possible funding sources. Nothing followed up after, and also nothing I should get. Uh, so for example, um, there's no new funds, uh, needed, for the needed, uh, twin arena, uh, the existing arena in, in the River Heights Fort Gary, Charlie Barber Arena is hanging on, um, but somehow we found funds for St Boniface Water Park. But again, nothing could be found for the, uh, twin arena, a, in, again, I've talked to councillor Duncan about it, maybe it's in the River Heights area, we do have one for Taylor, we do have some drawing plans for the River Heights Community Center Plan, and maybe there's another location in, in the central southwest quadrant city, no.
Councillor Orliko, I'll just move, uh, extension of two minutes, councillor Chambers has moved an extension, so two minutes, all in favor?
Very close to that, thank you.
Contrary, carried?
Okay, quickly I'll go through, there's no funds to compensate for the lots of LDR, uh, from the half of the arena, as the mayor promised. There's no commu- community connection space, even though, uh, in delegation I asked, and there's no follow up to why I can't get it. Uh, we're taking funds from the southwest BRT reserve, but no funds to provide recreational space for thousands of new residents that are coming forward, lack of funds to address the cost of growth that are going to happen at the River Heights Fort Gary, and none of the delegations, issues that I ever see feedback from the mayor or EPC after. Uh, so, end of the day, um, when I look at this budget, I understand it's difficult, and I understand it's going to be much more difficult next year, so that's why the amending motion's there. I think we all need to share it, it can't be just be all on the backs of property owners. We've always talked about the affordability issue and all those issues. You know, tariffs are going to have a major impact, yes, possibly on businesses, but guaranteed very much on individuals when their costs of their goods go up. So again, to say we can't do this now, which I knew would probably come up, and I heard the mayor's, or councillor Bowaty talking about it, I understand that, but at the time, as councillor Wyatt has said, we really just have to get our budget in line. Uh, this budget is, I don't even know how to call it a budget. Um, it really is just a putting your finger in the, the dike and hopefully the water won't explode everywhere else, but I think it is way past that point, I know we're way past that point. We're facing a huge issue, we have to have the courage to say we need to do something, it can't be just on the residents only, it, we can't wait for the province to come and help us out. We have to make sure the businesses, that's, but I also understand small businesses, so that's why we want to increase the small, uh, the, the small, uh, business exemption rate from forty seven to fifty five thousand. So, I know there's a whole bunch of issues still to deal with. I tried my best to do it in an open, transparent way, it was very frustrating that I got nowhere for the hours and hours and hours I spent on trying to find out ways to make sure that my ideas were, could be funded from the source. Again, I'm not going to stop, I'm going to work with my councillor colleagues throughout this year for the next budget, because this budget, if it passes, which I believe it will, I'm terrified about next year. Thank you.
Thank you, next is councillor Rollins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, I believe budget, uh, is a confidence vote, and, uh, I, I won't be supporting the proposed budget twenty twenty five, and as a matter of fact, Madam Speaker, um, my motion will be to move layover till next month, and, uh, my speech will explain why we should be doing this in February. And it's not unusual for us to do it in February, uh, it's a motion to move layover, uh, and it's not, it's not, it's not unusual to be doing a budget in February, we have to get it done by March, though. So, this decision is not made lightly. As I stated last week when I left the executive policy committee, I have serious concerns...
Councillor Rollins, yes, ma'am. You had, um, seconded another amending motion, so you're moving layover now? Are you speaking to that?
Yes, I'll be speaking to it, as I said, Madam Speaker.
So you're moving layover verbally?
Yeah, Madam Speaker.
Okay. So you've got a few minutes to speak to that?
Thank you. Yes, yes. Three minutes?
What we're moving, recommending layover on?
Budget, Madam Speaker. Can I speak to it?
Councillor Rollins, yes, you're moving layover, you said of the budget before us till next month?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got three minutes to speak to that?
Yes. So, uh, in the main, Madam Speaker, the fundamental responsibilities of government is to ensure that financial decisions, especially those impacting households and business, are fully disclosed and clearly communicated. This budget includes a tax increase, five point nine five percent, Madam Speaker, yet it fails to account for the imminent increases in water and waste rates that the public service at Water and Waste made clear were coming in February, Monday in fact, February third. In a recent standing policy committee meeting, that was confirmed, Madam Speaker, per the public service. Simply put, we shouldn't be passing this budget until those rates are incorporated, Madam Speaker. Water and sewage services are essential, they're not discretionary. According to public feedback, water and sewage rank among the top budget priorities for Winnipeggers alongside affordability concerns, and that's what we heard, Madam Speaker, in the engagement, yet we're debating a budget that does not account for financial impacts of rate increases on households, Madam Speaker. Without that information, we're presenting an incomplete and misleading financial picture to both the households of Winnipeg and businesses that use our water and will be impacted by those rates. New Pic, Madam Speaker, is a critical infrastructure project, and the mayor and finance chair have acknowledged its financial environmental implications, Madam Speaker. If other levels of government fail to provide their share of funding, rate payers will bear their costs, this is a direct quote from budget. This will not only lead to financial strain, but have impact on economic growth. By limiting our ability to add housing over the next two years, Madam Speaker, and I just left EPC because guess what I did? I was chair of housing. So, a responsible budget would incorporate a clear strategy to complete the project and a transparent accounting of anticipated rate hikes, Madam Speaker. These inflationary pressures taken together is why I'm moving layover. The budget does neither. Withholding critical information about water and waste rates is a breach of public's trust, and Madam Speaker, that's a serious thing to say, and please let me be clear, it isn't a breach from the public service, they've made it plain, they want it on the agenda, and they think it's coming February third. That's Monday, Madam Speaker. That's Monday. So, Winnipeggers have voiced concerns about the tax increase, they're especially skeptical about how the funds are being allocated. We should honor their concerns today. Honor their concerns with more information, Madam Speaker, not less.
Thank you, councillor Rollins, you're moving layover to the next regularly scheduled council meeting in February?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, your opportunity to speak in rebuttal?
Yes, uh, I'll be, uh, opposing layover. Um, the reason the councillor cites is, just to be clear, is it consistently, uh, water...
The time on the clock, please?
Water and sewer rates are dealt with separately from budget consistently, councillor votes on that. When our staff has the report ready, it will come forward, it'll be discussed and debated publicly, as water and sewer rates always are. We have said, I have said consistently, that, um, we know that when the water and sewer rates come forward, if the city Winnipeg would have to fund the third phase on its own, it would have an impact. But I've also said to councillor, and I reiterate, that I, as intergovernmental lead in my office, have and continue to work with senior levels of government to, uh, press them for partnership in funding the, the North End Plant, and that discussion will happen and be coming forward. Because we need to do, we will do all we can to get federal and senior, uh, provincial partners at the table to protect, um, homeowners in Winnipeg related to, uh, their, their sewer rates and their utility rates. So, that's a discussion that is coming, it's not for today, it's not part of today, because that report, as consistently in the years past, a water sewer rate report, is dealt with separate from budget. Now, I will point out as well, that, um, this is something that I have reiterated and will continue to reiterate, um, and so today we're dealing with the budget. Uh, councillor has the information, the councillor in question, of course, was on, uh, EPC up until recently, uh, when she stepped down, and did have, and as all councillors do, can have access to, uh, our staff, uh, either through my office, the CAO, uh, direct contact with directors if they need any information related to the budget. But there'll be a separate, um, report that comes when the staff is ready for the report to come, when the report is completed, and that will come not today, but sometime in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll call the vote on layover. All in favor of the layover to next regularly scheduled council meeting, please rise.
Councillors Gilroy, Mays, Rollins, Wyatt, Orliko?
Those opposed, please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Councillors Alard, Bowaty, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Luks, Santos, Schreier, and Madam Speaker, councillor Sharma.
The vote, Madam Speaker, yeas five, nays eleven.
The layover is defeated. Next speaker, councillor Rollins, you'll continue with your speaking time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I'll continue on, uh, with that substantive point, Madam Speaker, and just respond briefly and say, when you are intergovernmental lead, I think it's important, Madam Speaker, to lead with information that is transparent, and just because we were always accustomed to doing a thing, doesn't mean we should continue that way. And when that report was indicated by the public service on rates to be available on Monday, business days from now, it is, uh, a really difficult point of information on transparency, that it isn't understood in budget, Madam Speaker. Also difficult is a particularly glaring example of, uh, uh, of governance in this budget, uh, the inclusion of the so-called nine one one levy as a source of revenue. This fee was neither approved by the provincial government, nor was it implemented, yet it, it appears in budget as if, as if it was a done deal, again, accounting for twenty two point five million in projected revenue that does not exist. This is not a minor oversight or a technical error. It was deliberately included despite clear knowledge that the revenue could not be realized. The budget document's assertion that the fee is merely delayed is misleading. This is a fundamental violation of financial transparency. I am concerned that the Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards, uh, which say revenues must be measurable and realizable before being included in financial statements, that budgeting should adhere to accurate, transparent, and accountable financial reporting, uh, that it's offside of that. By including unapproved and speculative revenues, this budget does not meet those standards. Nine one one levy is not the only example. The budget also includes fifty one point one million in unspecified savings, Madam Speaker, essentially assuming that cost reductions will materialize without a concrete plan. Longstanding over expenditures, particularly in overtime and workers' compensation board claims, are also misrepresented. Chronic understaffing leads to excessive overtime, which in turn increases workplace injuries and WCB claims. This is not continuous improvement, it is a systemic failure that should be addressed honestly and directly, rather than obscured by vague cost-saving assumptions. A budget is more than a financial document, as we know, it's a reflection of our priorities, our plans, and our values as a councillor. The budget fails the test of good governance in three ways, in my opinion. It withholds crucial financial information... It withholds crucial financial information on water and waste rate increases, and that's a political decision, Madam Speaker. It will be characterized as, you know, that I, and I really want to be clear, that words should not be put in my mouth, that I think that that's a public service problem, when it is indeed the public service that said, over again last year, that they anticipated at the February meeting. So councillors in this room really have to defend why they will not synthesize that information for the public when they could have just moved layover. Withholding crucial financial information on water and waste rate increases impacts householders, it impacts businesses, it should be understood in context with a tax increase that, by the way, was new as, in, new with respect to the budget draft. It relies on speculative revenues, this budget, from an unapproved 911 levy. It lacks accountability in addressing systemic financial issues, and that's over and above the 51 million. But bottom line, we're asking Winnipeggers to accept higher taxes and new fees, but in return, they deserve honesty, transparency, and fiscal responsibility. This budget provides none of those. I want to spend a moment talking about the beloved Millennium Library that's in the Fort Bruges, Fort Carey Ward. And in part, Madam Speaker, similar to the vote we just had, to say, we're not moving one more month, despite the fact that I think many people in business and many Winnipeggers will say, what is 5.9% in context with the rate hikes that are coming maybe Monday? Right? That'll be a problem. But thematically, I think it's more of the same. When you hear people who've invested their time in the city, whether it is a business owner that just wants a line of sight because they survived the pandemic, they're seeing a property tax increase at home, and maybe they rely, they're concerned about the increase that a water and rate might have in context with that. But when we have people, large and small, contributors like small business, or contributors like the lax that we appoint as a council, that, or a library board that we have in the city of Winnipeg, and they tell us that the community connection space is a vital resource, that it's indigenous-led, it is serving a purpose in the downtown, it represents what, you know, for me, Madam Speaker, it was closed in December, and similar to the pandemic, boom, I start getting calls from downtown businesses, I start getting calls because why? People need a place to go. And, and so that, that isn't being heard fundamentally, and, and so when, while DCSP, and DCSP, by the way, it used to be a creature of the downtown biz, I moved the motion right over there where Counsel Brawadi or Counsel Chambers is sitting to create the DCSP, it might hold promise, but at the end of the day, it's a breach of trust yet again on people that have served the city, developed a service, and so there is an amending motion. It is with some irony that it takes from an accommodations tax in the downtown, but I think it's actually poetic, given the calls I'm getting as a local councillor that no doubt Counsel Gilroy is getting, the downtown stakeholders who experience the knock-on impacts from its closure. The irony of having the center plan budget component focused on Graham is not lost in me. Madam Speaker, our first duty as councillors, and I might need one more minute, is to serve the people of Winnipeg, to ensure their concerns are heard and their trust is earned, and they expect us to be having the conversations here, the difficult conversations with the reports that we need that aren't being held up in agenda management, reports the public service would assume would be on an agenda...
Counsel Sharma moves extension, all in favor? Contrary, carried.
Reports that the public service would assume that would be on the agenda, and, and that will look somewhat, I think, unreasonable at the end of the day, that we didn't include them in this budget. Budget should reflect both fiscal responsibility and community investment, and that includes community investment of many people that are here, in part the loudest and lone voices that are in favor of the community connection space, as it was conceived by them in 2019, and it was still being delivered in December of 2024, Madam Speaker. When a budget fails, though, on both counts of fiscal responsibility, community investment, it's really our obligation to push for better. Delaying this budget until after council votes on the inflationary costs and rate hikes that we know must come, in the mayor's own words, it's coming. We should be transparent about it, we should build that trust, not breach it, we should be fiscally responsible, and we can resume this date, we can resume this debate next month, no doubt we will, but with this already passed, and that's unfortunate, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Mays.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will be supporting the two amendments. I don't know if those will pass at this stage, I'm certainly opposing the budget as presented. I find it, I'm sitting here, I find it a very sad day, to be quite honest with you, it's a sad day. The very first day I was sworn in, in December of 2011, was the last time I voted against a budget, I had no role in its drafting, I liked certain parts of it, the public art part I remember praising, then Counsel Fielding for that, but I voted against it because I didn't feel it adequately reflected certain priorities, and I'd had no part in it. I have to say, I have real concerns about the process with this budget. At least Counsel Brawadi took my phone calls, no one ever asked, what do you want in this? No one came to me with me, at least Counsel Brawadi took my phone calls, which I respect. I presented here last week on an item, no one ever got back to me about any of it. So I appreciate the fulsome comments about participation and record-setting this and that, it's, we can do a lot better, we have done a lot better in the past. The last time I wasn't on EPC and was part of a budget, I remember Counsel Fielding reaching out to me, and Counsel Wyatt as well, and we talked about what I need, I needed a particular sidewalk project. Destiny Watt was involved in those discussions as the assistant to Counsel Fielding, so I know she knows how to do better than this, I know that, I know these people, and that item was put in the budget. And then the mayor called me, Sam Gates called me.
I think it's fair that we keep our respective staff out of the conversation here.
That's fair, thank you, Counsel Mays, let's continue.
I withdraw the comment, though it is factually accurate to say Counsel Fielding's then-assistant did work hard to try and incorporate.
To say my chief of staff can do better, is inappropriate.
Counsel Mays, you've retracted that.
I've retracted that. I don't have real issues with Mayor's Chief of Staff, but I'll come back to some of my comments with the issue with the budget. None of that was meant as criticism of Ms. Wyatt. Criticism's with the process where if no one reaches out to you and no one gets back to you, why would you then vote for the product? Because the people who pass it, well then, no, they have no need to ever consult with you in the future. It's not really about me, it's about having some respect for the people of St. Mattel, frankly, and some respect for certain issues. So, very briefly on the issue of what I, I'll briefly touch on the business tax increase that's being proposed, I'm sure if Mr. Remillard were here in delegation, he would express concern with it, he's been consistent with it, he's been polite in his depictions, however, he would also say, this isn't the time. Well, I've been here 13 years, the business community has never come forward and said, now this is the time, we're doing well. The business tax, let me be clear on something, in 2004, property tax revenue was 387 million, business tax 62. So we've gone up 1 million on the business tax to 63, and the property tax is doubled, it's roughly 800 million. I think you can see that the property tax increase has been substantially more than the business tax. Moreover, we've introduced the threshold, we've increased the threshold, this increases further the threshold to exempt small business. So, I would agree, let's exempt more small businesses, but let's try and harvest some more revenue out of the business tax. The mayor, to his credit, did harvest a little more, or at least at 63, Counsel Wyatt did that back in 2014 as well, so we're not frozen at 57 million as we were for so many years. So, I'll be supporting that, though it isn't clear on where that money would go, and I respect Mr. Remillard's position, perhaps in future we can have a better, more public discussion of that item. My real position, though, is to talk about the budget, not the amendments. I do have frustrations with, and again, I don't want to criticize the mayor's chief of staff, my criticism here is with a process where if no one reaches out, no one gets back to you, I'll resist the terminology of banishment that Counsel Luke's used to use with some theatricality about former Mayor Bowman, I'm not going to say that, although I'm not sure what the system is if you, if no one's reaching out, no one even asks you what you want. What did I want? Well, I wanted to move money from a running track, no, money from a parking lot project in my ward to construct a running track, to complete our running track strategy in the West End. So often criticized for being ward-centric, for not thinking of the whole city, here I present an idea to move money from my ward to another ward to try and do a recreation project. I don't know what the discussion was, because I never heard anything back, at least Counsel Brawadi, to his credit, did take my calls on that, so I thank him for that. So, the other issue that needs discussion, two points to go, the, if Counsel Brawadi's going to say the budget reflects our priorities in New Pic, I'm going to call that out, because there isn't a budget page I can amend on New Pic, because it isn't in the budget. So, what is to be discussed, and Counsel Rollins is partly right, saying, look, we were told the rate structure's coming in February, it isn't on the agenda, unfortunately, for February Water, one must conclude then, that it'll be published right at the end of February to make the March Water rate, because we were told the new rate structure proposal's coming in February. So, the new rate structure doesn't simply deal with the North End, it deals with four things, reserves, operating, capital, and capital can include anything from, three things, I guess, capital, operating, and reserves, certainly in this budget, we could debate that. I was told, look, you've got items on combined sewer, wait to discuss that when we have the rate report. So, fine, I will wait, I will discuss that, it isn't just the North End, it's combined sewer as well. But you can't then come in here and say, this budget does great things for the North End, but we won't listen to you if you want to amend anything on water and waste. Valid point by Counsel Rollins, so we'll have almost another budget debate then, when the rate report comes down, it will include a review of the dividend, the province will say, this is not on us, the North End, you've had decades where you've been taking a dividend, you identified BioSolids as a growth project, not as a provincial regulatory project in December of 2019, I spoke against it, but that was the will of staff and the majority of council, that's a growth project. So how we're going to pin that on the province, well, that remains to be seen, but let us have a good debate, certainly there's some moves we can make to get BioSolids done by 2030, but we should also be remembering, combined sewer under Mayor Bowman and under then-financed Chair Gillingham, to his credit, he gave me a lot of credit as a candidate, so I'll do the same, we increased the annual CSO budget by 50%, we went from 30 to 45. We have regressed on that, we have regressed on that back to 30 as you go forward. So, maybe we can't debate it today, because we don't have the rate structure in front of us, but we should debate that, we should try and figure out what we want to do, I'll save the world my discussion of being done by 20, I think we shortened it now from 2095 to 2092 that we're going to be done, we need to do a lot better than that on the CSO. So Counsel Rollins is right, we need to have that debate, I guess we'll have it in the absence of the budget. I'll need a brief, I'll need an extension, please.
Counsel Rollins moves extension, two minutes, all in favor? Contrary, carried.
What really saddens me, though, in this, was some comments that were in the paper today, the mayor saying, well, if you support investments in public safety, housing, youth recreation, and infrastructure, then vote for the budget, and if you don't vote, if you don't vote, if you don't support those, vote against it, it's that simple. Well, it's never really that simple, I actually don't, I actually think those comments are beneath the mayor, I don't know who drafted, perhaps the mayor did himself, but it's not that simple. If, if I'm voting, why is it that if I wanted to move money from a parking lot to a youth or recreation project, I need to vote for a budget that doesn't do that? Bit of a mystery there, isn't it? So, all budgets contain compromises, but the divisive rhetoric here, we started off with some promise, we had the retreat up at where we were riding Mountain, but this sort of rhetoric about if you're, if you're in favor of public safety, you'll vote for it, and if you're not, you'll vote against it, well, I find it hard to square that, I find that hard to square that. We know that Counsel Edie voted against operating in the first budget under Mayor Gillingham, he was put on the working group right after that, the budget working group. Counsel Allard voted against both operating and capital under the first budget, he's now been put on the budget working group. Counsel Santos voted against the police budget, voted for some amendments with Counsel Allard back there on the first budget under Mayor Gillingham, she was put on the budget working group, and then on EPC. And, and, that's fine, but I think if we say people who vote against the budget are against all of these things, then why would we then put them on the next budget working group? Doesn't that seem odd? So I think it would be wise if we move past some of the divisive rhetoric, I'm not here to attack the mayor's staff, I apologize if that came across, my frustration is with the process that if you vote against this, you're against all these good things, well then, why did Counsel Edie get put on the budget working group right after voting against the budget? Because at that phase, at least, we seemed to have a little broader conception, a little more idea that this was a council of 16 people. So I would hope we could maybe take a step back and cool down some of the rhetoric, try to work together a little more, try to make everyone included. I voted for budgets, which I didn't love all of it, but at least I felt I had a role in it, and I think we need to move past some of this divisive rhetoric and try to work together a little more, because to be told that you're against all the good stuff if you vote against this, well, that doesn't really hang together with people then getting put on budget working groups. So I would hope we could move past some of the division, some of the rhetoric that seems to be dominating the debate here, and perhaps in the next budget, try to work together a little more and have something for all of us. I do respect Counsel Edie, who has long championed the Arlington Bridge, getting something in there, I don't begrudge you that, but I think we need to do considerably better on the process, and a little less divisive rhetoric around here would go a long way.
Thank you. With that, we are going to recess and reconvene at 1:30 sharp, we're going to start, thank you. Good afternoon, I'd like to reconvene our council meeting of January 29th, 2025. Before we get back into debate, it is my pleasure to introduce and recognize a special guest in the gallery today, Mr. Rick Yerich, who is the Clerk of the Manitoba Legislative Assembly. It's wonderful to have you here, I know you've served over 20 years plus at the Legislative Assembly in the Clerk's Department, and recently, in the last few years, became Clerk. Congratulations to you, and thank you for being here today.
A reminder, we do not have privilege here.
Okay. So on that note, let's show our best behavior in this afternoon's debate, Counsel Edie.
Me? I'm having a bit of trouble, that's Counsel Edie, you said?
That's right.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, well, I'll just be my usual self, Madam Speaker, given Clerk of Assembly there, but, so I just want to start off by making just a quick statement. I was voting for this budget before I got appointed to Water, Waste, and Environment.
Are you sure?
And I'm going to talk about that. And I do have some concerns in listening to my colleagues, but let me just start off with, since I've been on council, 2010, there's never been, from many people's perspective, never been a good time to raise property taxes. So what do we do, Madam Speaker? The reality is this, never a good time, but on the other side, the demands on the services that we provide Winnipeggers and the infra- that we provide Winnipeggers and the infrastructure that we provide to them so that they can go about doing their day-to-day business constantly escalating. We've been reducing services for years because apparently there's never a good time to raise property taxes. Now, we did start doing that to do our local and regional roads, which were atrocious. And one of my colleagues brought in those tax increases because Council Wyatt knew how bad they were. So we did that, and we did an extra for rapid transit, Madam Speaker, more about infrastructure. But there's always been a huge demand on our operating side. The, well, what I would say is the most important part to providing the services to Winnipeggers that they expect. So we have those demands. That is our reality. That is city council's reality and the public service's reality. So we hear people get quite angry when we're reducing things. They're happy when we're increasing things, and I think that's great. Well, not necessarily, but the thing is, we need to provide those services to the level that Winnipeggers need. In many cases, it's not a want, Madam Speaker, not a want. It's a need. We have a need to take care of our old part of our city, and we have a need to deal with growth. Now, I've always talked on the revenue side about what we need to do. The reality is, the province has a financial problem, and we're proposing to derive a better deal from the province, and they need to figure out how they can help us out because, you know, Winnipeg and the whole province, they're all very important. We're in the metro region, metro Winnipeg region, and that's important. I've always focused in on trying to increase revenue while at the same time watching out for people who can't afford flat fees or what have you. Very difficult. Ability to pay in this city is, well, to me, is paramount. And while that, we're not talking about that in this budget, I just wanted to say, my first thought that came into my head was, this is a realistic budget, but it's reasonable to achieve the things that we need. And I was quite surprised, Madam Speaker. The mayor has adjusted and believed that he needed to do this, and we did it. Budget Working Group and others, staff and public servants convinced us we needed to do it. Now, it's important, I just did an interview, Madam Speaker, about crime and vandalism around the Filipino senior center in North Point Douglas. But it's the same, not, it's not just them that are experiencing these problems. So it's unfortunate, but what we have to do is, we had to increase our response capability and our ability to be more proactive, Madam Speaker, out there on the streets. While the province is moving forward many important issues to deal with our social problems, and I thank Minister Smith and Mr. Fontaine, who has her portfolio, and our premier. It's a difficult thing to deal with those social aspects, but we at the city level, our services are what, we're the ones responding. We're the ones having to deal with that. So, you know, maybe, I don't know what happens next year, but hopefully, we realize that maybe there is a bigger investment in the things that my colleague from the Daniel McIntyre Ward, I really felt what she had to say. I've always felt that way, and at some point, this city council is going to have to look at moving forward better, not just like, well, I think we're doing really well in the libraries, actually. Madam Speaker, you heard me during question period of the delegations, but, you know, we really do in this city care and invest a lot of money in our library system. Yeah, we could do more, however, you know, we didn't shut down the library. We didn't do that, Madam Speaker. As a matter of fact, we're providing library services further out to our newer areas, which is very important, Madam Speaker. And we have to look at that, and we have to balance all that. So I just, I, I would hope that we could be kinder because we all understand the underlying issues, most of us. Lots of us have been either in charge of the budget, like Council Brawdy, he's doing the best he can, and the mayor, and for them to go to five-point-nine-five percent, that's a big deal. That is very important to acknowledge. I don't think we should be dismissing, you know, there's some detailed problems that we have, but I know what it took for them to have to look at it this, in the way they are. And so I want to thank our person in charge of the budget, the public service is trying to make things happen. I will, in my portfolio moving forward, you heard from a couple of other councillors, and those two councillors actually know what the problem is. They have a very good idea, Madam Speaker, and I am looking forward to working with them. And they know that we have some serious challenges to deal with in order to make sure, Madam Speaker, that those people who can ill afford, like the people who are making, who are living in those houses, that they could only afford to buy a two-hundred-and-thousand-dollar house because they're working in various areas. So we have to.
Council Schreier moves extension. All in favor? Contrary, carried.
So what I'm saying is, we're moving forward. Yes, there's a delay, but this is a very difficult portfolio to handle with water, waste, and environment, and I'm invested in that. But I also wanted to mention, again, before I was asked to serve on water, waste, and environment, I convinced our budget, council budget people that we needed to invest in the Arlington Bridge. Now, we couldn't find everything we need. However, what we did find, Madam Speaker, and this is why I was going to vote for the budget, I wouldn't have voted for the capital budget if the Arlington Bridge wasn't moving forward in first tearing it down, continue the design, and then look to other levels of government as well as to what we have to be able to fund the replacement of the Arlington Bridge. And I think that that's something really important because coming out of the two-thousand-and-twenty-two election wasn't looking good, and that is in the Strategic Priority Action Plan. I should just end on that because I heard that in the speech. That S-PAP, our former C.A.O. said, very ambitious, Madam Speaker. In other words, we're going to attempt to try to get all that stuff done, but we have realities that we have to deal with, and this budget is dealing with the reality while being reasonable to the property taxpayers of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Santos, followed by Council Chambers.
Got my notes here. I want to start off by thanking the Budget Working Group and the public service, especially Tracy Graham and Lisa Pablo, for their hard work in maximizing operational efficiencies and improving service delivery. It is no small task, as we know Winnipeggers always demand better customer service, more capital investments, while also ensuring property taxes and fees remain affordable. This work requires tough decisions, balancing public safety, road and transit infrastructure, recreational amenities, public green spaces, customer services, and three-one-one, and so much more. And I believe this year's budget continues to strike that balance, a budget that balances fiscal responsibility with the realities of our financial pressures while addressing ongoing social challenges. That being said, I do not take the issue of property tax increases lightly. Many residences in the Point Douglas ward will not reap the benefits of this increase. Actually, the rents will go up because landlords will simply pass the costs on to tenants. We need to move beyond this unsustainable cycle of blanket increases across the city. I support exploring different and more equitable ways to generate revenue, such as adding five dollars to vehicle registrations or adjusting the land transfer tax. These options ensure that those with the financial ability to pay a little bit more, those in stronger financial positions can help support the broader community. So I urge my council colleagues to speak with their provincial counterparts, to push for a new funding, a new sustainable funding model. The ongoing cost pressures and outstanding operation risks of eighty-four million dollars in this budget are deeply concerning and, if I dare say it, downright irresponsible. Without a proper funding framework, we're simply delaying the inevitable, putting our entire city at further risk. Winnipeg residents expect us to take a responsible and proactive approach, and we cannot afford to ignore these challenges any longer. As Chair of Community Services, I want to highlight some of the critical investments under this portfolio. Thanks to the provincial funding, we have hired twenty-four new firefighters, ensuring adequate coverage citywide. In addition, significant capital investments will support the purchase of four new pumpers, a ladder truck, as well as the construction of a new fire hall in Waverly West. We're making significant strides in protecting and enhancing our urban canopy. Increased funding for tree planting along boulevards and in parks, coupled with the purchase of additional tree pruning truck, which will reduce the tree pruning cycle from twenty-one years to seven years on boulevards and twelve years in parks. This is vital for maintaining the health of our city's green spaces. This budget continues to support the Community Grants Fund, which benefits many nonprofit organizations throughout the city, and more importantly, it allocates an additional one million for youth recreational programming in high-needs neighborhoods, an investment that will have a profound and lasting impact on our communities. In addition, I'm pleased to highlight our continuous investments in community centers and construction of new spray pads as part of the Strategic Priorities Action Plan. These investments align with our commitment to increasing funding to implement the Winnipeg Recreation Strategy. One important area I do want to highlight is the commitment to the community connection spaces. I acknowledge that a lot of good work was done in the past, but that was during a different time, Madam Speaker, under a different provincial government that was not here to assist the city with the mental health and addictions crisis. I have been vocal in my criticism of the previous provincial government for failing to provide the necessary support to address the mental health and addiction crisis that has deeply impacted our city. For over a decade, Winnipeg struggled without adequate provincial partnership, leaving municipalities and frontline organizations to bear the burden alone. But today, we're in a new era, one where we have a provincial government that is willing to collaborate alongside a mayor who is committed to finding solutions. This shift in approach allows us to explore new ideas, adapt to evolving challenges, and work towards meaningful, long-term changes for those who need it most. I want to sincerely thank the delegations who came out and spoke passionately about the community connection space, but I was looking for solutions to optimize the space to meet current needs rather than cut other services. In that process, an incredible opportunity presented itself, an organization with deep experience, built capacity, and strong partnerships in the downtown core and with individuals living rough in encampments. This is exactly the type of collaboration we need to move forward in a way that serves our community best. I am committed to continue to work with D.C.S.P. and to maintaining ongoing dialogue with the public. And I do agree, libraries are places for everyone. They are more than just books. They are a safe space that provides resources, connection, and support to many in need. So in closing, I am grateful that this budget reflects the priorities of our city. It is never easy to balance competing interests, but this budget ensures we are investing where it matters most while keeping services intact. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Chambers.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There's been a lot of discussion this morning with respect to the budget. I just wanted to provide some highlights and reasons why I'm supporting the budget today, both capital and operating. Budget talks about investments in infrastructure renewal. The twenty-twenty-five budget prioritizes critical infrastructure upgrades, including road repairs, bridge maintenance, and wastewater, wastewater system improvements, ensuring the city's long-term sustainability and safety for residents. There's also parts of our budget that discuss affordable housing initiatives. The budget allocates significant funding to affordable housing projects, addressing homelessness and supporting vulnerable populations through new housing developments and community programs. Enhanced public transit services. We've heard over the last couple of days about Winnipeg Transit shifting our model to a spine and feeder. With increased funding for public transit, the budget aims to improve accessibility, reduce wait times, and expand routes, encouraging more and more residents to use sustainable transportation options. As more and more people utilize our transit services, that will increase the revenues. Of course, we have to work to make it safe, and with the community, community safety officers on board, perceptions about safety on transit are adjusting. There's climate and action sustainability. The budget includes investments in green initiatives such as renewable energy projects, waste reduction programs, and tree planting, and I believe Winnipeggers are really on board in terms of tree planting and making sure our pruning cycles are reduced as well. It's also aligning with the city's commitment to reducing its carbon footprint through our, our clean action, our, our clean action investments that we're making as, as a city. And then finally, community safety and well-being. Additional resources are directed towards emergency services, as we heard with fire and paramedic and, and police. Mental health support, which is something that every community is dealing with, mental health support, and making sure that those that are most vulnerable of our community are receiving the supports that they need in order to turn their lives around. And of course, community policing. As our city grows, not only from a population perspective, but also the footprint of our city, going to longer distances, communities like Sage Creek, Council Mesa's ward, communities like Canterbury Trails in Council Wyatt's ward, communities in your ward, Madam Speaker, Amber Trails. These areas didn't exist, and of course, Bridgewater with Council, Council Luke's ward. These areas of the city simply did not exist fifteen, twenty years ago and are now home to greater populations. I believe I was just looking at the other day at, you know, the compositions of wards and the populations contained in those wards, recognizing that Bridgewater is at fifty-three-thousand people. Council Mesa's ward, fifty-one thousand people, and other areas of the ward, well over fifty-thousand people. So again, they're new areas, they're growing areas, they're, you know, as I said, the population is growing, population is growing largely through immigration, and people are coming from areas of the world where they have different relationships with government, with police, et cetera, et cetera. So the complexity of the calls that Winnipeg police are attending are greater, are, you know, dealing with mental health and wellness and things like that. So adding more resources to policing is one of the options that this, this budget is, is addressing, but also recognizing that we need to put money in other programs and other services that help support vulnerable communities. That's what this budget does. So I'm asking my council colleagues to, to support this budget. I believe, does it have everything that every councillor wants? No, and it will never have everything every councillor wants, but we are elected to govern, and that is about making difficult decisions. And so we're here today faced with a difficult decision. So again, I'm asking my council colleagues to support this budget, and we will continue to work throughout the year on the other priorities and the other initiatives that that have been brought to us as a city council. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Counselor Chambers. Next speaker, Counselor Schreier.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I've never voted for the, by the way, there's not the budget, there's two budgets. There's two votes, if we may, as we have had in the past. We have two separate booklets. In fact, we go about them completely differently. We've got the operational budget, we've got the capital budget. To make the distinction, our Budget Working Group has nothing to do with recommending sources of revenue. They're not proposing sources of revenue, nor do they have anything to do with the capital budget, the construction budget. What the Budget Working Group does is deal with how we spend the operational budget. That's the Budget Working Group. So you can see there's a huge distinction between the operational budget and the capital budget, including how council is allowed to deal with it, including how our Budget Working Group is allowed to deal with our budget, because there's two budgets. And I'm going to say that that distinction means so much that I'm going to make the point that it defines virtually every speech I've heard to date. It, well, I'll start with Orliko. Counselor Orliko, he said some good things, important things. And I'm glad to hear it, because I've been saying it for ten years. So Counselor Orliko mentioned the growing infrastructure deficit. Yet the infrastructure budget, the capital budget, related to the construction budget, that's the fastest-growing part of our budget. So, and when we increase our expenditure on infrastructure, our capital budget on construction, we call that growing the economy, right? We know that. We call that growing the economy. When we do that, when we raise that budget, we're calling that an investment. So since that's the highest, fastest inflation, the fastest-growing part of our budget is that budget, is the construction budget, the capital budget, the infrastructure budget, since that's the highest increase in our taxes in our lifetime. And if we call that growing the economy, that's our investment, then why is Counselor Orliko talking about a growing infrastructure deficit? How can we literally, in one minute, one councillor to another, are we all on the same page on terms of values and opinions? We've got all different ones on those. But if we don't even understand, we're not even talking about the same thing at the same time. What are we talking about? Counselor Orliko has made a very good point. The growing infrastructure deficit. How can that be? It's the fastest-growing, fastest-growing part of our budget. That's where our tax increases go. And it scares me to think that we're giving the impression on a daily basis that our operational budget is causing problems for operational budget. No, it's not. And I'll give you another reason. I'll give you another example of this. Well, I have to say, you know, I'm not looking for a fight. But therefore, let's not have a fight. Therefore, let's all agree, maybe, when reality is reality, when we can all agree on some facts. As an example, and I really hate to do this, but geez, man, it's, I gotta do it. I mean, you know, Counselor Brawdy, Finance Chair, he says there's inflation everywhere. And he says, you know, the increased cost for cities' vehicles and cities' wages. But I have to make the point. The cost of the increase of the vehicles is way bigger than the cost of wages. And I'll, so when we say, well, there's inflation everywhere, it's our job to say, where exactly? Because not all inflation is the same. Because people's wage inflation, their increase in their wages, that doesn't compare to the rate of increase of inflation for food or for housing. And so I'll give you one specific point that's going to crop up again tomorrow. Just as an example, helicopters, all right? So the cost of the helicopter in what, thirteen years, fifteen years, went from three-point-five million, okay, three-point-five, to thirteen-point-five. Okay, in about fifteen years? I'm just saying, that's an increase of two-hundred-and-sixty percent. It's just one example. So you can say, well, you know, Jason, that's just anecdotal, it's just one thing. I'm not, I didn't give you the worst example. I think people know that in this room. I didn't give the worst example, the highest example. It's just the most tangible one, because it's going to be on the agenda tomorrow. But when it comes to the cost of operating the helicopter in the same time period, the cost went from one-point-three million to about two million. In the same period that the cost of the helicopter went from three-point-five to thirteen-point-five, the cost for operating, the cost for paying people, the labor costs, if you will, went one-point-three to just around two. Only an increase of seventy percent. This is nothing special.
Just to clarify, the helicopter purchase is a lease-to-own, and the maintenance cost, the maintenance cost are-
Counselor Chambers, thank you. Tomorrow, we'll have an opportunity to discuss that item.
I know, I appreciate his comment. As a matter of fact, this is the kind of discussion we're supposed to have. So when I start asking these questions, I'm going to want some answers. You know, I'm really glad that Counselor Chambers made that distinction in terms of it. But we're still talking about capital costs. We are. And if you want me to make a better point than the helicopters, I can. Remember, when I started on the helicopters, I said this is not the best example. It's just the one coming up. You know, I've got to say, given Counselor Chambers' remarks, you know, I've been talking about construction inflation for ten years. Two minutes left, oh my God. So, so everything I've been saying in my first term is what we're talking about today. Well, look, I mean, as an example, Sheri Rollins says, "We want more information on our budget and taxation. We want transparency. We want fiscal responsibility." Those are words, music to my ears, because I've been talking about that for ten years. It's not an exaggeration. You don't believe you look back at all the council meetings. It's all on Hanser, it's all on video. What am I asking for? I'm asking for us to understand what our budgetary problems are and not pretend it's our wages. That's the least of our concerns, because that is the lowest rate of inflation. They're the ones that are suffering the most. They're not the ones causing the problem, if anything, they're causing the solution. Because we have serious inflation rates, I've been telling you this for ten years, and here we are. And I've been asking for more information on what's causing the inflation. I've been asking for more transparency, fiscal responsibility. We didn't get it. Now here we are. Is there something I've said on record in this chamber, you can watch or read, that is not consistent with what I just said now and consistent with everybody saying today, as if it just happened? You know what's really unfortunate? Is, you know, the people here, as an example, Kate Kaler, Michael Redhead Champagne, Lisa Forbes. I don't think, I could tell them, I understand you can look good about something or you can try to do good, and sometimes it's confusing. I don't think it's fair for these people who come here today to be misled into thinking that the solution to this is just successful lobbying. Because this, we could have predicted five years ago. There's nothing to say we're going to get better next year. The pattern is there. It's really simple. It's getting worse next year, and the least we can do for Winnipegers is explain how and why. But we haven't done that yet. Now, Mayor Gilliam said there has been a recent construction inflation report out. I haven't seen it. I don't know who has.
Counselor Edie moves extension, two minutes.
But if we're going to have that openness, that accountability, well, we better all see that construction inflation report. You know, I was told two years ago in this chamber that my statistics were completely inaccurate. And yet, eight years earlier, I was predicting that the construction inflation was unsustainable. And yay, guess what we're hearing for the last three years in this council chamber? From Chris Lorenz, that we need new streams of revenue. Well, I was saying it was unsustainable, and now he's asking, he's saying it's unsustainable. He's saying we need to find new sources of revenue. Now, either we can try to explain to ourselves and to Winnipegers what's causing our budgetary problems, or we can give up and then talk about our successes in generating new streams of revenue. Because that unto itself isn't an answer, it's abetting the problem. So it is our job to ourselves, we owe it to each other in this city hall and to the people of Winnipeg, the taxpayers of Winnipeg, to stop talking about as if all inflation is the same. It's not. And the difference in inflation rate is the problem. I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Nancy McGwich.
Thank you, Counselor Luke.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So I rise to speak to the budget today. We are at a very unique time in the city Winnipeg's history, actually global history. In the history, in the city's history for this budget process, we are at a time where we are experiencing the results of years of tax freezes and low tax increases, which are having a significant effect on our operations and infrastructure. And we are still recuperating from COVID. We don't seem to hear that much or recognize that impact as much as we should. The city Winnipeg took a two-hundred-million-dollar hit over the last four years during the COVID process, and we are still in financial recuperation. COVID was a key factor in reducing our fiscal stabilization reserve. Also, also Winnipeg, due to favorable federal and provincial immigration policies, is experiencing, for Winnipeg, unprecedented growth and increased demands on services. We are also a city experiencing what virtually every city in Canada is experiencing, growth without a funding model to support growth. Cities are at the forefront of dealing with decisions made from higher levels of government. And in addition, we're living in one of the most uncertain times in the world with wars, supply chain issues, and aggressive leadership to the South creating much uncertainty. And of course, we all know how people feel dealing with uncertainty. It's extremely difficult. So to the Budget Working Group and to the city staff, I want to thank you all for trying to navigate all these issues and demands and resulting in what I believe has created a fair and affordable budget. To the residents of the Waverly West Ward, I thank you for providing me input at the two open houses I held and to all the emails that you have sent in. And citywide, to all the folks that have called or sent in emails, I really, really appreciate your input and guidance. We hear you. Affordability is so critical at this point in time. And we hear you on safety and infrastructure issues being key priorities. And I know in this budget, we are addressing residents' priorities. For sure, I'd like to see more funding for so many things, more infrastructure improvements, subways, a reduced reliance on other levels of government. But again, and I say this to a lot of my residents in the ward who come from cities and countries of two-hundred, three-hundred-million people plus, you know, why don't you have this? Why don't you have that? We are a city of about eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people and a province of about one-point-three-million. And we only have so many people, and we can only apply so much, so much tax increase to support the desires we want. I know this budget is reasonable, it's affordable, and even with the tax increase supports our key services. I want to thank the mayor for being bold enough to make the decision to raise taxes. This is needed to support growth and ensure city services are not cut. It's not an easy decision, but I do agree, it is the best decision for the citizens of Winnipeg. Personally, I have to say this about the budget, I'm very pleased to see the most investment ever in active transportation and road safety. I'm extremely pleased to see so many positive initiatives happening in transit and, of course, roads. Everyone loves roads. And I'm really glad that we toasted the pilot project recommendation on snow. I don't know where that got dreamed up on one late night, probably in the Budget Working Group, but you know, that's okay. And I think all, well, I know, all of you heard this at our Strategic Action Plan Planning Session. To get things, to get all the things done that we want to move forward on, it requires a strong and focused and accountable public service. And in this budget, we are moving forward with more initiatives than I have ever seen on oversight and accountability. Continuous improvement activities to identify efficiencies, control expenses, augment existing processes, improve customer service, and possibly generate additional revenue sources. I'm bringing forward a big suggestion in the coming weeks. We are putting a magnifying glass on improving processes and on high-cost departments and efficiencies. And the Budget Working Group is continuing to move forward reviewing and scrutinizing. I get a lot of criticism. We get a lot, I'm sure we all do. Well, what about the internal? What about the internal part, the bureaucracy? How are you dealing with it? How are you looking to improve efficiencies? We are committing to major, major initiatives. We're committing to a comprehensive review, I noted this, of high-cost departments and staffing up, and I think this is, I don't know, for some reason, this one really resonated with me. We are staffing up to deliver on the performance management audit. So in summary, I'm pleased to be supporting a budget that Winnipegers can afford, while at the same time not cutting services and still supporting key priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luke. Counselor Gilroy, your opportunity to close on your motion.
I had an opportunity to close. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I just, I do, I do, I know that I was very passionate in my speech. I do want to thank our staff. I do believe that they do an incredible amount of work, and Counselor Brawdy. I know that this is not easy, so I do want to recognize that. It is a very difficult process. But coming back to the Community Connection Space, I just really feel that, I think it's actually six-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand. It's even less than I thought. I just really feel, Madam Speaker, that this isn't very much in a big budget like we had. And just, I really don't feel that when we say that we're going to want to hear from the public, and then when we do hear from the public overwhelmingly on one issue, and we're not going to put it in the budget, Madam Speaker, I guess I really question that. Like, do we really want community consultation? Do we really want to go out there and ask people what they think? Because we got a response, and we're not responding. So, and overwhelmingly, like, I mean, this is probably the biggest issue, and it's over six-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, and we can't put it in the budget. So that raises a lot of questions in my mind about our whole process, Madam Speaker. And the fact that we have the changes, really significant changes to community services, that a large part of it now comes out of the CEO's office, so that I, as a councillor, cannot ask really important questions regarding our police budget, regarding our community, part of our community services budget, that really, I could have dug deep down and maybe even found some money, Madam Speaker, but now I can't do that because it's EPC that does that. So now I have to come in front of EPC and ask in ten minutes my questions or whatever I want. Our roles as councillors should be overseeing everything, and that's very vital to the services that our city offers. And policing and community services is very much a big part of that, Madam Speaker. And so I was really shocked, because I was, this is my first time on community services, and I remember going there in delegation and being able to speak to those items and having councils really drill in and ask the questions. We're really limiting what information we're providing, not only councillors, but then the public, Madam Speaker. So I guess I urge you to support this. I think you heard overwhelmingly the community support behind the Community Connection Space. It is not the same model as the Downtown Safety Partnership. It is just not. And I wish, we don't have enough time, I mean, it's ended. So right now, I can't even take you there for a field trip. But it is a very, very unique model that was supported from the community. It was supported from the staff. Like, this is a success story that is being touted across the country, and now we're deciding to just stop it. It makes no sense to me. So I urge you to support the motion. Even if you're, you may want to support the overall budget, and I get that, but at least support the one motion, right? No matter where you feel on the budget, this is an important motion. We all heard overwhelmingly from the community how important this is. And I urge you to look beyond your own wards here to the two councillors that really represent the people that are using the space and really kind of understand the desire and the needs of that space. So I think I spoke long enough. Thank you for listening to me, for the respect of the dialogue that we had today. But we got a lot of work, people. We've got some changes to make. And I thought we were doing it under the government- We've got some changes to make, and I thought we were doing it under the governance review, and we really haven't gotten anywhere. And that's on us, and that's on me, and we all got to make changes here because, but the system right now is broken and not working. And you know what, who, you know what, it's the residents that feel it. It's the many people that came in delegation that feel that they're not being heard today. And, and that's really sad for $614,000 in a $1.4 billion budget.
Thank you, ma'am speaker. Thank you, councillor Wyatt, to close on motion one.
Thank you, madam speaker. Since in 1997, after the George Cuff report and the elimination of the Board of Commissioners, it was very clear at that point, combined with legislative changes to the City of Winnipeg Charter Act, we enshrined in by 1998 the Strong Mayor Model, also this first year of the tax freezes that have been going on now for basically 26 years. So for the most part, by and large, a few years of exceptions during that 26-year period, the neo-right and the neo-right agenda has been in control of the budget process and this city. Instead of the neo-right, why can't we do just what is right? We have challenges facing this city, madam speaker, and you don't have to go far to see them. Point Douglas, the North End, graffiti everywhere, broken windows, the states of the streets and the housing supply in decline. Bill Bratton, the famous chief of police of New York City who wrote the Broken Windows Theory of Policing, you look after the smaller stuff, the permit, the zoning, the enforcement of your bylaws, the broken windows, and actually neighborhoods can become safer. But we have not only cut policing, we've also cut our enforcement when it comes to the ability for us to enforce our bylaws. And the police cuts, madam speaker, are leading to an absolute disaster across the city. The hiring of the chief of police right now, a mess. We have waiting pools closing in the inner city, being cladded up and shut down. Happy Land Pool still closed with no sign of the rec facility, the aquatics park that's been promised to St. Boniface, only $2.6 million in the capital budget so far, with a $10 million budget. No idea when that's coming, but the pool's still closed. Crime and safety on our transit buses, madam speaker, at an all-time high. 10 million, up to 10 million going out the door of people who walk on the transit bus without having to pay any fare. They said as high as seven, and they said as high as 10 in your committee, madam chair. And the fact of the matter is, they don't want to document it because they don't know how to enforce it. Well, there's ways to enforce it. Other cities have done it. We have legitimate citizens paying their transit fare and their monthly pass month after month, yet people are just walking on the buses and not paying, and nothing is being done, and the system is getting more and more unsafe, and it's directly related to that. Talk to the transit union. Capital projects, madam speaker, badly needed, like the Louise Bridge, put off for another 25 years. Deferred for 25 years. Not to mention other rec projects that have seemed stuck in the mud from the Southwest Rec Project that can't seem to get off the ground. Who knows when East of the Red will get off the ground? The mayor promised in the last general election to deliver that project. We have challenges right across this city, madam speaker. And are we setting aside reserves to address all these various capital projects that we know are coming? Have we taken the honest advice from our staff, who behind the scenes do advise the Budget Working Group and EPC and do advise directly the mayor's office, these are the capital challenges we face down the road, we should be setting up reserve funds? No, we push them off. We put a red light, green light, and yellow light. Well, more stuff is falling under the red light and the yellow light, very little green is coming forward in terms of funding in the budget. That's how the Budget Working Group works, hasn't changed, continues the same way. The funding of these projects, madam speaker, is becoming now acute. We need to start to address the growing infrastructure of our existing infrastructure that's crumbling, not to mention the need of new strategic infrastructure that is unfunded. And yet, we developed an actual policy called the Strategic, the SPAT, the Council's Priority Action Plan. We did a strategic plan for the future of this council, yet we refuse to fund it. We refuse to find the dollars involved to make it happen, and that's called leadership. That's called courage, to face the challenges we're facing and to be upfront about it. Because the citizens of Winnipeg know what's happening out there. They can see the state of the street. They can sense certain neighborhoods are now more unsafe than ever before. They know the state on our buses and the lack of safety therein. They see what's happening, and we're not rising to these challenges. The per capita ratio, we know, of police officers to population continues to fall. And the situation therefore gets more dangerous. Our officers now, madam speaker, and I talked to many of them who are on the front lines, many of them senior officers, who are now facing situations that they never thought they faced in certain neighborhoods of the city, more dangerous situations than ever before. And they don't feel that in many ways that we have their back, especially with what's happening now with the hiring of the chief of police. Water and sewer rates, as pointed out by councillor Rollins, why can't we know what they are? They're just going to be announced right away. Tell us what they are, release the rates. I think it speaks to the issue of transparency that councillor Rollins and councillor Mays rightly spoke about. But the fact of the matter is, non-members of EPC, as councillor Mays pointed out rightly in his speech, not being, not being even a call or an email saying, what are your priorities? Nothing speaks to the arrogance of the existing system that we have in place. And I know that the people in that system are better than that. Business tax, madam speaker, in 2001, the business tax made up 9% of total revenue. It's now fallen less than half than that. And yet, we have businesses out there crying for more policing. We have people walking into retail stores and operations. I talked to the head of retail operations in Manitoba, their association. It's endemic. The problem their membership is having, they've never seen anything like this before. People literally walking in broad daylight and stealing and walking out. They need help and they need support, but we're not there. And the Community Connections Programme, it wasn't that long ago, madam speaker, when a traumatic incident happened right in that library. And here we are, cutting away at the very programming that helps prevent having people there, eyes and ears, to help prevent those sorts of situations from developing, and we're cutting it a year after we agreed to fund it? It doesn't make any sense. Madam speaker, the truck is not only stuck in the ditch, the tires of the truck are now coming off. And the city feels like we are falling backwards with crumbling infrastructure, rising crime rates, a house, housing crisis, combined with a mental health, urban health crisis, I call it, happening in the streets of our city, that we are failing to rise to the challenges that are before us. And I know that there's a lot of wisdom in this room that are willing to stand up and help, but there's not the team effort that was promised at the beginning of this term, I think by the leadership of this council, that we were hoping for by this point in time in our term. We should not be in this position right now, leading up until the next general election, only less than two years away. We should be well on our way to addressing all of these challenges and actually now moving on to other ones. But instead, we are falling behind. And that is only because we have employed the same impractical elitist system that has existed since 1998, which by and large has not been copied by any municipality in Western Canada. Rob Ford rolled it out to all of Ontario without promising it in an election, and was hammered on that in the newspapers and with the media and the public, bringing out a Strong Mayor Model. You watch Ontario, in 20 years' time, the disaster, those municipalities will be it. But the rest of what municipalities have not, on their own, said, let's adopt the Strong Mayor Model. No, not at all. So you show me a management model, madam speaker, that has existed for over 25 years that has not been copied by anybody, and I'll show you a management model that doesn't work. And it isn't working, madam speaker. The time has come for us to start to work together. We need to pull together as a council, and it's not happening. I'm done. Thank you, madam.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, madam speaker. I've got good news from the councillor, from Transcona. Because several things that he just raised as concerns that he'd like to see more of, by golly, they're included in this budget. He wants more public safety. There's more police officers, 36 more coming in fact. He wants more safety on transit. There's 15 more safety officers that will enhance transit safety. He wants more emphasis on recreation in the North End. The good news is a million dollars here that is allocated, and to be clear, because I think one of the councillors, perhaps councillor from Daniel McAdair, didn't quite understand this or see this, right in the budget, it's for high-needs areas. That million dollars is for high-needs areas, for youth programming in high-needs areas to be developed in consultation with the councillors from the high-needs areas. So that means if you're a councillor in a high-needs area, you're going to have direct input on the allocation of those funds to make sure that they go where they're most needed. Last year, we, as councillor Berwadi is the finance chair, developed a multi-year budget. We talked to every city councillor and asked them for their input. I can't remember how many line items we had of requests of input, and we did that a year after we had done the Strategic Priorities Action Plan. This budget is a budget update. We did not go one by one by one by one to councillors. Why? Because we just went through the strategic plan two years prior. The year before, we just had hundreds upon hundreds of requests of priorities of city councillors. So we had a whole list of priorities. And in fact, just today, I went through Strategic Priorities Action Plan pages 15 to 19, the five priority areas. I printed them off, and I went through with a highlighter to say, oh, the budget has funded this, this, this. Anyone is welcome to come to my office after this meeting today, and I will show you the things we have funded in the previous budget and this budget that are aligned with the Strategic Priorities Action Plan. Now, as to motion number one, I will absolutely be rejecting motion number one. And I am frankly surprised that a motion comes forward to increase business tax 20%. It falls out of the sky, gets introduced today to increase business taxes by 20%, comes from two veteran councillors. On the, on just days before, an administration south of the border is threatening to bring in 25% tariffs on our businesses locally, and the counter-tariffs that may come with that. Frankly, the motion is irresponsible. I spoke last night while I was watching the hockey game to two major business leaders in our city. One in the aerospace sector, I called him, and one, we all know, from New Flyer. I asked them how they're doing, how their businesses are doing. I said, at council, we're paying attention to what's going on with these tariffs. We know it would detrimentally impact your businesses. We want to protect your businesses. And then come today, and a motion falls out of the sky without any discussion, without any transparency, without any consultation, that would add 20% increases to business owners at a time when we should be rallying around our businesses and protecting them. An irresponsible motion. Our businesses are already paying more because they're going to pay more through the property tax increase. 14 million more, in fact, will come from businesses because of the property tax increase. Winnipeg is the only major city left in Canada with a separate business tax rate in a city as it is. The last thing we want to do is to drive more businesses out of our city, or also to tell more businesses, we really don't want this to be a business-friendly environment. The businesses generate the economic activity that we need to fund the pools and the libraries and the police cars and the firefighters. It's critical that we support businesses. So this motion number one, I will reject, completely reject. Every one of us should completely reject it. Motion number two, which is the amending motion related to the, the community connection space, funding was only in the budget until the end of 2024. I do, I appreciate that a couple of councillors said those are their residents. I'm the mayor of the city, those are my residents too, and I care about them. And I know that the DCSP will connect those residents with the services that they need. And if they need library services, there's a whole library full of staff right there to provide them library services. And I reiterate, we as a council have done a lot of good investment in libraries, $2 million more than last year, 28 more FTEs now as compared to 2013. Significant increase. Those individuals will get serviced. The vulnerable people in the community in that space will get help. I'm rejecting motion number two. And I'll, I'll end with this. I appreciate that, you know, some councillors don't like painting a budget vote kind of as a dichotomy. Well, in fact, it is. Budget votes really don't have the luxury of nuance in their support. It's a yes or it's a no for the budget vote. A vote for this budget is a vote to invest in the priorities that Winnipegers have set. Priorities like public safety, transit, infrastructure investment, fixing roads, clearing snow, youth recreation, mobile outreach that will help us partner with the provinces one plan that we've been calling for, for months, years. Finally, they come in as a province with one plan, and we are partners. This budget helps to fund our partnership in that plan. To vote yes for the budget is to vote for those priorities. To vote no is to reject investment in those priorities. Full stop. It's yes or it's no. I'm asking everybody to vote for this budget and vote for the priorities that the people of Winnipeg have told us are important to them. And please, reported vote on all three items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have two amending motions and will vote in reverse order. The first is amending motion two that was moved by councillor Gilroy regarding the community connection space. All in favor, please rise.
Councillors Gilroy, Mays, Rollins, Schreier, Wyatt, Orliko.
Those opposed, please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Councillors Allard, Berwadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Luks, Santos, and, madam speaker, councillor Sharma.
The vote, madam speaker, ayes six, nays 10.
Amending motion two is defeated.
Speaker, if I may, because there may very well, as there has been in the past, a separate vote for capital and operational budget, these are amendments we say to the budget, but as we've stated, there is not one budget, there are two, and they're voted on separately. If we get a clarification, maybe people might, maybe the clerks might like clarification as to what these amendments are to. We can't say the budget.
Thank you. We'll proceed with the amending motion. When we get to the budget, we can break it out. Operating capital, we've done that previously.
People understand at this point that what, what vote these amendments are to? Because we're seeing the budget, but there's two separate budgets.
It notes specifically which clauses are being amended, so I hope people understand because it's been circulating all day here, these documents. I think they do. Thank you. With that, I'll call the vote on amending motion one that was moved by councillor Wyatt. All in favor, please rise.
Councillors Gilroy, Mays, Wyatt, Orliko.
Those opposed, please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Councillors Allard, Berwadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Luks, Rollins, Santos, Schreier, and, madam speaker, councillor Sharma.
The vote, madam speaker, ayes four, nays 12.
Okay, amending motion one is defeated. And now on to the 2025 budget update. We can vote on the three recommendations separately. Operating capital, and there's a, a vote for the transit. There's a transfer from the Southwest Rapid Transit. We'll vote on that separately. Okay, I'll call the question on the operating, that's clause one, the operating budget. All in favor, please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Councillors Allard, Berwadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Luks, Santos, Schreier, madam speaker, councillor Sharma.
Those opposed, please rise.
Councillors Gilroy, Mays, Rollins, Wyatt, Orliko.
The vote, madam speaker, ayes 11, nays 5.
The operating budget passes. On to clause two, the capital budget. All in favor, please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Councillors Allard, Berwadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Luks, Santos, madam speaker, councillor Sharma.
Those opposed, please rise.
Councillors Gilroy, Mays, Rollins, Schreier, Wyatt, and Orliko.
The vote, madam speaker, ayes 10, nays 6.
Capital budget passes. Now on to clause three, the transfer from the Southwest Rapid Transit Reserve. All in favor, please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham. Councillors Allard, Berwadi, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Luks... Edie, Luke's, Santos, Madam Speaker, councillor Sharma.
Those opposed, please rise.
Councillors Gilroy, Mays, Rollins, Schreier, Wyatt, and Orliko.
Vote, Madam Speaker, ayes ten, nays six.
That, Mr. Clerk, is defeated. Okay, and that does not affect the overall budget vote today. Correct, Mr. Clerk?
Correct. Vote, recommendation three requires a two-thirds vote of, of council to pass.
Well, now move on, move on to bylaws under EPC. Yes. Just a moment. Recommendation number four. Councillor Orliko?
Can I get an explanation on how a 3.7 million dollar hole in our budget doesn't impact the budget?
Mr. Clerk, procedurally, if you can speak to that, please.
It is, uh, simply a transfer of, it is my understanding that this is a transfer of funds from one account to another, and the reserve requires a two-thirds vote to utilize the money for other than the intended purpose.
Correct. And the, the other purpose is for general revenue. Uh, so without that money, the general revenue, my understanding, if I'm not wrong, is short 3.75 billion dollars, uh, which is the budget. So I'm just confused. I, I just like, I have a question.
The transfer, I believe, is to the Financial Stabilization Reserve Fund, not general revenue. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, um, we'll have a vote on clause four. All in favor? Contrary? Read it if you could.
Clause four is the proper officer's clause.
Is that clear? It's the proper officer's clause. So all in favor, please rise. Actually, it's, I think it's been clarified. So all in favor? Contrary? That's carried. Okay, now we'll move on to bylaws under the Executive Policy Committee. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if I've got this right, then, Madam Speaker, I would move that the following bylaws be read a first time. Bylaw number three, 2025, bylaw number four, 2025, bylaw number five, 2025, bylaw number six, 2025, bylaw number seven, 2025, bylaw number eight, 2025. Aye.
Contrary. That's carried. Your noted in opposition, councillor Wyatt.
Bylaw number three of 2025, bylaw number four of 2025, bylaw number five of 2025, bylaw number six of 2025, bylaw number seven of 2025, and bylaw number eight of 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
I move, Madam Speaker, that bylaws number three, 2025, to eight, 2025, both inclusive, be read a second time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? That's carried.
Uh, sorry, bylaws numbered three of 2025 to eight of 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, which one shall we go back to? There was one that was missed after this. Okay. Mr. Mayor, the next.
I move that the rule be suspended, bylaws number three, 2025, to eight, 2025, be both inclusive. Be read a third time, the same be passed in order to be signed and sealed.
Okay, all in favor? All in favor, please rise.
His worship, Mayor Gillingham, councillors Alard, Brawdy, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Luke's, Santos, Madam Speaker, councillor Sharma.
Those opposed, please rise.
Councillors Gilroy, Mays, Rollins, Schreier, Wyatt, and Orliko.
Vote, Madam Speaker, ayes ten, nays six.
That second reading is lost. Third, pardon me. Third reading is lost. That concludes our agenda. Or, Mr. Clerk, there's one more? In a moment, yeah. Okay, Mr. Mayor, back to the one that was missed.
Yeah, uh, I would re, I would move that bylaw number ten, 2025, be read a first time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? That's carried.
Bylaw number ten of 2025.
Councillor Luke's, will you move adjournment? All in favor? Contrary? It's carried. Oh, roll call. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, councillor Sharma, his worship, Mayor Gillingham, councillors Alard, Brawdy, Chambers, Dobson, Duncan, Edie, Gilroy, Luke's, Mays, Rollins, Santos, Schreier, Wyatt, and Orliko.